Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to walk peacefully together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Collier.
Chair, councillor Griffiths will be absent today from today's meeting and I move that he be granted a leave of absence.
Thank you.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that councillor Griffiths be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,750th meeting held on Tuesday the 12th of November 2024 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gidney that the minutes of the 4,750th meeting of council held on the 12th of November 2024 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would like to call on Mr Ken Loftus who will address the chamber on the Sunlight Centre. Thank you, Mr Loftus. You can proceed when you're ready and you will have five minutes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. My name is Ken Loftus and I'm the CEO and clinical director of the Sunlight Centre. It is a privilege to stand or sit before you today representing the Sunlight Centre, a mental health charity that has been part of the local Brisbane community for over seven years now. What began in the back room of a local cafe in Cannon Hill has grown into an essential support service now based in Morningside. When I founded the Sunlight Centre in 2017, our mission from the very start has been simple yet profound, to remove as many barriers as possible for those seeking help during their darkest times. At Sunlight, we provide free face-to-face crisis counselling to teens and adults struggling with suicide ideation and self-harm behaviours. This is vital help that comes at no cost to the client and with no need for a mental health plan and clients can self-refer. We believe that everyone should have access to professional crisis support, especially when they need it the most. Over my career, over a couple of decades now, I've witnessed the deep pain and suffering that individuals endure when they are unable to find immediate and personal and affordable mental health support and that's where we come in. Whether it's a young person feeling overwhelmed by their social life and school pressures or an adult who is battling the thoughts of hopelessness and topics such as financial hardship, Sunlight is here to provide a safe confidential space for people to talk, heal and move toward recovery. Our clients are paired with fully qualified professional councillors who work with them in one-on-one sessions to provide the emotional and psychological tools they need to rebuild their lives. Many of our clients are young people and recently we've seen a devastating increase in the number of teens struggling with severe mental health challenges. We all know the recent tragedies in our local communities, teens who have heartbreakingly taken their lives. These events always weigh very heavily and we know they weigh heavily on all of us and it's a stark reminder of why our work is so critical. In addition to our core crisis counselling services, we also deliver mental health workshop programmes to community groups and fee-based programmes to organisations. One such one is our latest new active listening skills programme called Talks, which we want to teach to senior cycle students to give them active listening skills and tools to express themselves efficiently. We are excited to be launching this Talks and other programmes and other community and fee-based mental health programmes at our AGM on Wednesday the 11th of December and we'd be honoured for any of you here to come along and join us. Invites pending. As you know, providing mental health services comes with significant costs. Despite the overwhelming need in our community, Sunlight does not receive any government funding for the service we provide. We rely entirely on fundraising efforts, donations from both individuals and generous organisations and income from our workshops and programmes. Delivering our programmes goes beyond the local community and into the workplace, helping to support the mental health of employees, which ultimately benefits the wider community as well. Through delivering such, delivering programmes such as the Sunlight Cross Funds, this income to support our core service of crisis counselling, but it still isn't enough. Our qualified councillors are paid for their time of course and this cost along with the cost of maintaining our space in Morningside is why we are always incredibly grateful for the support we receive from individuals and businesses in the area. Recently, we were fortunate to receive a generous grant from the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust, which will be essential in expanding our services and thank you so much for the LMCT, for their partnership. This support will make a tangible difference in the lives of those who need it the most. But as you know, when it comes to meeting the mental health needs of our community, there is still much work to be done. We are here to ask for your help in raising awareness of our services and our fee-based workshops, in collaborating on our local events and of course, any support you can offer in securing the funding we need to keep going. Every bit of support is crucial to our mission. We want to ensure that Sunlight services reach everyone who needs them in this community and your involvement can make that possible. In closing, I want to thank you all for this opportunity to share about Sunlight and our commitment to supporting our most vulnerable community members. Whether you decide to attend our AGM, collaborate with us on an initiative or contribute in any other way, your support will have a lasting impact. Together, we can continue to make a difference and ensure that no one has to face their darkest moments alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Loftus. I'll now call upon councillor Howard to respond.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Loftus. On behalf of everyone in the chamber, we so appreciate you bringing these things to our attention because it is the knowledge that you have imparted to us today that makes us understand what valuable work your organisations do. So I was thrilled to hear that the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust has been able to assist you and I know that there's many councillors in the room that have assisted as well. I certainly know councillor Murphy and councillor Atwood and I think councillor Collier. So it is really, these are great opportunities for you to address our councillors so that we understand the amazing work that you are doing in the community. We very often hear talk about the work of volunteers and we know that people who have had lived experience of these types of very sad issues are always so much able to help those that then go through this. There is never any easy way of making this better. We'd all like to think that there was an overnight solution and we just know that that is not the case. So we really want to say a huge thank you for the work that you're doing, but also to know that I'm sure, I speak on behalf of everyone here, to know that all of the councillors in this chamber are very willing to work with your organisation to assist where we can and I personally will look forward to meeting with you after this session to see how we can be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howard and thank you, Mr Loftus, for coming in today. Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, as part of the Shrinna Council's plan to keep Brisbane moving, we are planning to make school commutes safer while easing congestion on local streets. Can you please update the chamber on the latest news as part of our Safer School Precincts initiative?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair and through you.
One moment please, councillor Murphy. I shouldn't have to remind councillors every week that they are to remain silent while somebody else, one of the other councillors are on their feet and to not call out across the chamber. Councillor Murphy.
Through you, thanks to councillor Parry for the question. Earlier this year, the people of Brisbane overwhelmingly re-elected Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and this administration to keep Brisbane moving. A key part of our plan was a new Safer School Precincts Programme designed to create safer school environments, to improve traffic flow and to promote active travel options. We want our city to have school holiday traffic all year round. We want the roads around our schools to be noticeably quieter and for families and students to be able to move around safely and more easily. And that's exactly what we are striving for with the Safer Schools Precincts Programme. In the first tranche, we've committed to undertake work in four suburbs across the city, Kedron, Mansfield, Winham Manly and Indrapilly. It will see over 21 schools set to benefit from the programme and impact the lives of nearly 10,000 students and their families. Our award-winning Active School Travel Programme has already worked with 168 schools and over 127,000 students over the last 20 years. But we have to acknowledge that behaviour change is only part of the solution and there's more that we can do on the ground to make our school precincts safer and more efficient. I think it's rather fitting, Chair, that to mark the 20th anniversary of the Active School Travel Programme, that we celebrate the start of a new programme to sit alongside AST, the Safer Schools Precincts Programme. Safer Schools Precincts isn't just about expanding 40 kilometre an hour zones around schools, it's about delivering tailored, tangible improvements that are unique to each precinct and community. Council is embarking on a significant co-design journey with these communities to develop solutions and to invest in them based on feedback. It reminds me of one of my favourite pastimes as a child growing up, Madam Chair, reading a choose your own adventure book. The possibilities of how a story would pan out were endless depending on the path that you chose to take and these Safe School Precincts playbooks are truly a choose your own adventure. It's not about telling schools what council wants to do for them, it's about schools and the community choosing their own adventure, telling us what best works for them. It could be infrastructure upgrades like raised pedestrian crossings and other treatments that will make it easier for students to cross busy roads. It could be creating wider footpaths that allow for more space to walk, ride and scoot from home to school. They might choose to introduce school zone gateways, leading students and parents along safe and signposted routes towards school each day. We have studied the best examples of success from around the world to see how we can improve the safety and livability of these school precincts. In the UK, the School Streets Initiative combined behaviour change programmes with street infrastructure to create their own safer precincts. They redirected traffic away from school gates by prioritising those who walk, ride or scoot. That's now been rolled out to hundreds of schools across the United Kingdom. While we've taken our lead from the best examples worldwide, we want to really take each of these school communities on the journey. So I'm excited to say, Chair, that the first precinct in Kedron started consultation last week and that will run till the 12th of December. The Kedron precinct encompasses Padua College, Mount Alvernia College and St Anthony's Primary School. As councillor Parry can attest, these schools are in a tight one kilometre radius enrolling more than 3,000 students. Every day, these streets are inundated with traffic that they were never designed to carry. During consultation, residents will notice a number of activities taking place in and around these schools. We've installed call flutes across the precinct, highlighting key locations and encouraging community participation. There are in-person pop-up engagements that will be run outside the schools, giving parents, students and residents the chance to learn about the programme and share their feedback. During consultation, council will gather the community's feedback to shape the design, define the precinct and conduct any technical investigations that are required. The community's feedback will then inform the delivery phase of the project where council will install the treatments and balance the needs of the precinct. We'll then reinforce the new infrastructure through our award-winning Active School Travel Programme. The application of this programme will ensure that these precincts have long-lasting benefits from the infrastructure that the community has chosen. By focusing on these local improvements that directly impact schools, families and local residents, we will ease traffic and we'll create a healthier, more active and safer community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in the space of 24 hours, your LMP regime has had many different explanations about why your metro buses were pulled from service after their launch less than four weeks ago. This launch came after you announced an early start for metro services despite them being 12 months late already. First, you pretended it was business as normal with a notice on TransLink's website. Then you claimed everyone else was wrong and only LMP councillors were right and it was apparently always a trial. Then you said it was to iron out issues that passengers had raised and finally you let slip that it is not, that there is no longer a deal with the state government for funding metro operations. You've been hiding away, not answering questions, you're here today, so will you finally come clean with the people of Brisbane? Is your excuse really any of those things that I've listed? Or is it actually because the bus station upgrades at Griffith University, Burandah, Cultural Centre, King George Square and the Adelaide Street Tunnel are desperately behind schedule and metro won't operate for maybe another year?
I've already said not to call out councillor Johnson. That's inappropriate. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Yes, Madam Chair, you've made rulings that we can be supportive of other councillors. Are you saying we cannot do that now?
Councillor Johnson, I'm not going to debate with you. What you did and what you called out had nothing, it was inappropriate and you know it. Please resume your seat.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
I've simply supported councillor Cassidy by saying it's a stop-up.
Councillor Johnson, I don't know, hold your point of order.
So can I just be clear on the rule?
And I've asked you to resume your seat.
Because the rule was, we could make supportive comments.
Councillor Johnson.
Can you still make supportive comments or not?
I've already said I'm not debating. I've given you instructions and you're not following them and I caution you. Lord Mayor.
Well, Madam Chair, yet again, we see the only detractor of Brisbane Metro in action again, trying to talk it down. Yet just today, we read, we saw the Premier is a big supporter of Brisbane Metro. The new Premier.
One moment please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you are also not following my instructions and I caution you. Do not call out. If you have further that you want to say, you can do that in general business. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The new Premier rightly pointed out that there is one reason that the metro has been delayed and it was the former Labor state government playing games for years and years and years and years and putting hurdles and delays, adding extra costs.
One moment please, Lord Mayor, please. We'll wait until the chamber is quiet.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor.
The truth hurts, Madam Chair. The reality is, the former government, the former government.
One moment please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I again caution you for calling out and not following my instructions. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The former government did everything it could to delay and slow down the metro. Why? Because it wasn't their idea. But by the dying days of that government, they finally realised that this was a great project and guess what? They're not going to be able to deliver any other major infrastructure projects in time for the Olympics, so maybe this is the one that will be the game changer. They knew it. They finally came on board and in recent days, we've seen the leader of the opposition, Stephen Miles, say he's a great fan of Brisbane Metro and in the dying days of his government, he pledged his support to the project. But we have here another pathetic attempt from the opposition leader who, as I said, is the only person who doesn't support Brisbane Metro. The only person. Not the Labor state government, the formal one that came on board, not the Labor federal government, who's a big supporter of the project, not the new LMP government and not the former LMP federal government. They have all been supporters of the project, but not councillor Cassidy. Now, here are the facts. The 169 pilot trial has been a raging success. A raging success. Councillor Cassidy, I don't know if he actually went to university, but I did, I went to UQ and guess, guess when the university semester ended? It was the 16th of November. When did the metro services stop? The 17th of November. Surprise, surprise. You don't have to be a genius or a graduate to work out that at the end of the university semester, you stop running services. Like, this is not groundbreaking, but guess what? The Labor state government was told this in a submission made on the 23rd of August.
That's right.
I tabled this document. This document, which was a service proposal change from transport to Brisbane to Translink, reads in the background, metro vehicles will be deployed on Route 169 from mid-October 2024 as part of early customer services trial, trial, prior to full implementation. They were told this on the 23rd of August. I tabled this document. And who else did we tell?
One moment please, Lord Mayor.
Sorry?
Councillor, one moment please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you've asked the question, you don't get to continue to ask questions during the answer. And I caution you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And who else? Who else did we tell about it? Well, everyone. Because councillor Murphy, councillor Murphy stood up there on day one at the University of Queensland and made it very clear that this would run until the end of the university semester. He made it very clear.
One moment please, Lord Mayor, please resume your seat. Councillor Cassidy, as you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct and I ask you to stop speaking, I hereby warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of the meeting's local law 2001 that failing to comply with the request may result in order being issued. Lord Mayor.
Now, I guess councillor Cassidy believes that we should continue to run the high-capacity mass transit service when university is finished. I assume that's what he believes, but it was always the intent that this would be to the end of the university semester. Councillor Murphy made that clear on day one and it's been a raging success. We had between 90 and 100,000 passengers catch the 169 service during the trial. We provided a 50% uplift in capacity and we had fantastic feedback from the riders of the new Brisbane metro vehicles. And so this has been the successful trial of stage one and we're looking forward to a pending announcement with the state government on when the next part of the staged rollout of metro will occur. Because we made it clear as of last year.
Councillor Collier.
That metro services would be introduced in a staged way and we've repeatedly said that. Now councillor Cassidy may not have been listening, councillor Cassidy may continue to oppose the project.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
But he's the only one, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community and the Arts Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrinna Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better with more support for artistic and cultural endeavours. Can you please advise the newest funding available to Brisbane's artistic and cultural groups?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and through you, I thank my deputy councillor Atwood for the question. Council is absolutely thrilled to announce that applications have now opened for two of our fantastic creative grant programmes. The Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships and the Creative Sparks Grants Programme both opened for applications yesterday and we're so excited to support even more Brisbane creatives through these initiatives. Madam Chair, the Labor, the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship supports individuals emerging... Sorry, I'll just start that again, I was interrupted. Madam Chair, the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship supports individual emerging creatives that are just starting their career or are hoping to start their creative career by providing funding to them to undertake professional development opportunities specific to their needs and to their creative form. These career and professional development opportunities may include things such as skills development, masterclasses and workshops, artist residences, conferences, short training courses, formal mentorships or more structured learning experiences. So you can see, Madam Chair, quite a number of ways in which we can support these wonderful opportunities. These development opportunities vary between previous successful candidates but can be run by peak body organisations or arts and cultural experts with recognised professional standing. The Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship helps to attract, develop and crucially, retain artists in our city and to help to build a skilled and sustainable creative sector that is able to flourish for years to come. Previous recipients of the fellowship programme have used the funding to undertake a wide range of professional development opportunities. In this year's round, Cecilia Martin received $10,000 to undertake a three-month professional development at Tic Tac Arts Centre in Brussels, Belgium, where she was mentored by the internationally acclaimed choreographer David Zembero. Cecilia can now bring those skills attained overseas in dance, improvisation and performance and combine them with her foundation of acrobatic skills to share in workshops with the Brisbane community. The Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship is just one of our incredible creative grants, Madam Chair. The Creative Sparks, the Creative Sparks Grant Programme has also just opened for applications as of yesterday. The Creative Sparks Grant Programme is an initiative of Brisbane City Council in partnership with the Queensland Government through Arts Queensland. This fantastic arts programme is available to artists and not-for-profit community arts, historical and cultural organisations to help them create and present creative work. The purpose of the programme is to create jobs, aid economic growth, attract tourism and improve social cohesion by supporting the creative and cultural sector here in Brisbane. Through strategic investments, the Creative Sparks Programme helps to build capacity and resilience in the creative sector, which is so important to the livability and vibrancy of our city. And Madam Chair, may I also just point out that some of these parts of our industry are really doing it quite tough at the moment, so this is a wonderful opportunity to enhance those strategic investments. Brisbane is the lifestyle capital of Australia and supporting our creative sector will help ensure this for years to come. With funding of up to $15,000 per project available, we receive a wide range of applicants eager to develop and share their artists' projects with the Brisbane community. Successful 2024 recipients include Paul Hodge, who received $10,000 in funding to help his black box project. The world premiere of Black Box was held at Queensland Performing Arts Centre in May 2024 and provided employment opportunities for 35 arts workers in Brisbane. And Madam Chair, through you, I was delighted to attend and it was a fantastic show. Another successful applicant from this year received $9,900 in funding through Creative Sparks for the new Waves project. This project will present a hybrid trans-disciplinary event and exhibition, exploring the intersection of art and the experiences of the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Featuring film, music and photography, the event seeks to draw connections between creativity and accessibility. We know how popular our creative grants are to Brisbane artists, which is why we want to help interested people put their best application forward.
Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Chair of Arts and Community, councillor Howard. First Five Forever library sessions teach children crucial literacy skills and provide community, for community for parents, which can be really important in a very socially isolating time. They're so popular that they're often fully booked out, sometimes even having to turn parents and kids away. Councillor Howard, will you work with the LMP state government to support children's literacy skills and ensure the First Five Forever programme is delivered with no cuts from your portfolio?
Councillor Howard. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, isn't it amazing that we have the Greens standing up here today, talking about our libraries, and yet their one and only state member has never, never advocated for this? Our First Five Forever programme, Madam Chair, has been running since 2015 with the help of the state government funding. This is primarily funded by the state government, and when the programme commenced in 2015, council was provided a million dollars per year to administer the programme. Now, Madam Chair, through you, over the ensuing times, the former, the former Labor Government has seen fit to decrease that funding. Now, the Shriner Council is committed to delivering these programmes without increasing the cost to residents. But, Madam Chair, this is something that we provide the resources to provide these programmes that are a state government initiative, and we work very closely with the state library, where we know that we are great partners within that. And this state government-funded programme will continue to deliver almost $4,000 of these free sessions every year on their behalf. So on behalf of the state government, we will continue to deliver 4,000 sessions across the year.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, Councillor Massey.
The question was, councillor Howard, will you work with the LNP State Government to-
Thank you, Councillor Massey.
-support- And also that the First Five programme is delivered with no cuts from your portfolio.
Please resume your seat, Councillor Massey. I do not uphold that point of order. The Chair is answering the question. Please let her do so. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the previous Labor State Government failed to keep up with our population growth, and council has been trying to fill that void. And as I said, the Shriner Council is committed to delivering these programmes, and we will continue to deliver these programmes. These programmes are not going away. They're being delivered across our 33 libraries. Every single one of those libraries will have these programmes for mums and bubs. Now, we also know that we have a new state government. Thank goodness for that, is all I can say. Now, we run monthly scheduled sessions, not only of First Five Forever, but we run Queensland Ballet Storytime, Nature Play, Jar Jim Stories and Steam Storytime, just to name a few. We are partners in this, Madam Chair. We are partners in making sure that we have fantastic programmes for our mums and bubs. We know how disappointed they are that there aren't the same number of sessions as we've had in the past. But, Madam Chair, those sessions are still there. Our fabulous library people will still continue to support the mums and bubs. We will make sure that this programme continues, but we have to do it sensibly. This side of the chamber is all about making sure that we're fulfilling our commitments from our budget, and this is what we are all about. So there are no cuts from the Shriner Council. There are no cuts from the Shriner Council. It is the lack of funding from the former state government that is ma-
One moment, please, councillor Howard. Councillor Collier? No, you were calling out, and I asked you to stop calling out. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Madam Chair, as I said, the former state government did provide $1 million a year. This was reduced in 2019 to $711,877. The Shriner Council has been topping that up ever since, and every year we have paid for the corporate overheads cost. And until the last budget, council contributed a small amount to increase the availability of the programmes, around $120,000. So in excess of $200,000 has been spent to proper-
One moment, please, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, no matter where you live in Brisbane, your local library will have an early learning available each week. Naturally, the Greens are attempting to politicise this issue, despite never advocating for additional funding for this programme. They are deliberately dramatising this issue, stirring up fear amongst the community members, making factually incorrect statements for their own desperate political gain.
Further questions? Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, I have been reviewing the answers to this week's questions on notice. And Google is a very useful tool for finding information quickly and easily. Can you please advise the chamber on how the Labor opposition could have used Google to avoid embarrassing themselves and their federal colleagues?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, I can, Madam Chair. Now, councillor Givney mentioned Google, and Google is a very powerful tool when it's used correctly. And I actually believe councillor Adaman has held a masterclass in how to use it after he successfully asked Google to fix a mapping glitch in his ward earlier this year. It worked, and it's a great example about how Google can be used effectively in solving problems and finding out answers. It can help uncover facts. It can check history. It can even avoid embarrassing missteps. And speaking of those, through you, Madam Chair, seems councillor Cassidy had a big misstep with his questions on notice last week. He asked us how much money council had received from the brand-new Federal Active Transport Fund, a reminder for the chamber that this fund has only just started taking applications. And you would think that, of all people in here, councillor Cassidy would know this, because it was in fact councillor Cassidy who brought a motion to this chamber asking council to apply for funding when the fund was announced in May this year.
One moment.
And yet, just last week, just last week, councillor Cassidy submitted questions on notice asking how much money council had received from the fund over the last two years? How much funding council has received from a brand-new fund that is still open for applications? It really begs the question, Chair. How could council have received any money from a fund where applications have just opened and, in fact, haven't even closed yet? Is councillor Cassidy, he's such a passionate supporter of active transport and for us applying to this fund, that he didn't even do a quick Google search to see when the fund had opened and when it had closed? Yet here we are, six months after he brought a motion to this chamber, saying, 'Where is the money? Show me the money!', rapping on council's door. What is truly embarrassing about this, Madam Chair, is that he didn't ask just once, not twice. He asked this question three times, three questions on notice about this, Madam Chair. And a simple Google search would have revealed this fund open. The 31st of October, it will close on the 13th of January. None of this funding has been allocated, and no projects have been approved. Well, who is writing these questions on notice, Madam Chair? It's not ChatGPT, because there is no intelligence there, artificial or otherwise. But just because he's been floundering this time doesn't mean the opposition should be afraid to ask these questions again, Madam Chair. But next time they do, they should use Google, because Google is your friend, councillor Cassidy. And we see, Madam Chair, today, the career mail is councillor Cassidy's friend. He is holding up a career mail for the first time I think I've ever seen he's holding that up, because most of the time the career mail has been running some pretty bad lines against the Labor Party. And I know, councillor Cassidy, you're holding that up, but the career mail did not endorse you, and they did not endorse your leader at the last election. And in fact, I cannot wait for the time when the career mail takes your career down Memory Lane and shows that you are the least successful opposition leader in this place in history ever, Madam Chair. So let's have a look.
Please get back to the question.
I will, Madam Chair. Now, a quick search would have also highlighted that the announcement by Minister King, which shows the federal government's intent to support active travel, it also would have highlighted that Minister King came out here to see the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge just a few months ago and made the announcement about the fund one month after she visited. Now, we know that Minister King probably wouldn't have visited Brisbane if councillor Cassidy and his team were elected at the election, because their active transport programme was a tweet on X, some photos and a promise for $25 million for more footpaths. That was the only active transport commitment that the Labor opposition made at the last election. And never forget, Madam Chair, the last time the Labor Party were in office in this place, do you know what they spend? Do you know what they spend on active transport? $5 million annually. $5 million annually. So granted, $25 million is a big improvement for Labor.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
The deputy mayor's just been calling out while councillor Murphy's speaking, how much, how much, what did they spend? And that is an interjection. When I made a supportive comment for councillor Cassidy, you called that inappropriate. So why is it not inappropriate when the deputy mayor does it?
I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Murphy.
Let's be clear, Madam Chair. This is $100 million from the federal government across 566 local governments in Australia and all of the state governments. It is effectively $176,000 for each council, which might fund one or two extra footpaths every year. It is a quarter of what this council spends on active transport in Brisbane alone. So if councillor Cassidy wants to move a motion supporting active transport, he should be supporting the Shriner Council, the biggest supporters of active transport in the country.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the State Library of Queensland says funding for council's First Five Forever programme has not been cut, and I table the evidence here today. So why has your LNP regime decided to cut 23 First Five Forever sessions from the Brisbane City Council library's December programme?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I think councillor Collier would have been wise to listen to councillor Howard's response to the previous question. As usual, the Labor Party is following the Greens, the coalition of chaos is working, but we see who has the upper hand in that relationship. It's the Greens. The Greens have the nous over the Labor Party any day.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
The Meeting's local law requires the Lord Mayor to answer the question, not debate it. I am interested in what's going on about this funding, and I would appreciate if he could answer the question.
I don't uphold your point of order.
Of course not.
The Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer the question. Lord Mayor.
Okay, so we see Labor asking effectively the same question that the Greens just asked. They're not very flexible and nimble on their feet, but I will answer again, because councillor Howard answered it very well. So this programme, First Five Forever, is a state government programme. It's not a council programme, and it was always funded by the state government. Now, back in 2015, the government put $1 million a year into this programme in Brisbane. And that continued on very successfully for many years. But then, in 2019, the Labor State Government cut the budget down from $1 million to $711,877.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I refer you to Section 33.8 of the Meeting's Local Law, which states, 'In answering a question, the following general rules shall apply. Neither the Lord Mayor nor a civic cabinet chair shall debate the subject of the question.' Can you please advise why you are refusing to apply the Meeting's Local Law as you are required to do under the Meeting's Local Law and the City of Brisbane Act?
I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I move dissent in your failure to administer the Meeting's Local Law as it is clearly and plainly written, as you should do.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey to dissent in my ruling. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The nos have it. Division. Division has been called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 7 against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you also for acknowledging that I wasn't debating the question, but indeed I was correcting the premise of the question, which was incorrect, and providing relevant information in answering that question. So in 2019, the Labor State Government reduced the funding from $1 million down to $711,877. And they haven't increased it since. And what's happened since 2019? Has there been any inflation? Has there been increase in staff costs, increase in wages, increase in the cost of materials and services and everything else? There's been massive inflation. In fact, the biggest period of inflation that we've had in decades, yet the state government did not increase the funding since 2019. And so we've been trying-
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, I caution you for calling out across the chamber. Lord Mayor.
And so we've been doing the best we can to try and pick up the slack left by the state government. But it got to the point where the cost was continuing to increase. And so what we're doing now is we're ensuring that the state government funding funds these 4,000 services, but we're no longer picking up the slack for the state government. They need to step up. They need to step up.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, as you continue to fail to comply with my request for you to not call out across the chamber, in accordance with Section 21.8 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct, and your conduct in this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Lord Mayor.
So if Labor councillors are unhappy with the number of sessions funded, well, they only have themselves to blame, because this was a decision and the implications of the government that they supported, the former Labor Government. Now, just to be very clear, what's happened here is that this programme will still provide almost 4,000 free sessions over the year, equivalent to around 75, 76 a week. There's also been a lot of work done to make sure that the highly patronised sessions are prioritised. Now, the patronage for these sessions varies dramatically. In some cases, some of the Babies Books and Rhymes sessions can have over 100 attendees. And obviously, we're prioritising those most popular ones, but in some cases, some of these sessions can have seven attendees or nine attendees. And so we've made sure that with the resources that are available and provided by the state government, that we prioritise them to the areas where the demand is greatest. And that's the reasonable thing to do. But I can tell you, what we are doing as well is we're advocating to the new state government to revisit this issue, the decision of the former state government, to see if we can get that funding topped up to where it should be. We know there's great demand for this. This is a great service. It was always a state government service. It should continue to be a state government service, but obviously, we can't pick up the slack any longer. We've been very upfront with people about the fact that we have massive cost shifting from other levels of government. And whether it's this programme being reduced and they're respecting coun- And whether it's this program being reduced, and they're respecting councillors to pick up the slack, or vaccinations, councillor Marks, we recall. So we have provided state-funded vaccinations for many years, and the state government kept on reducing their funding or not increasing it as costs go up. And, you know, we had to put our foot down on that as well, and we say, if you, if you want us to provide a vaccination service, you need to fund it appropriately.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions, councillor Wolf.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the deputy mayor. Deputy Mayor, as a host city for the Olympic and Paralympic Games, it is important that we promote an inclusive and tolerant city. This chamber has previously called out anti-Semitic behavior by Greens councillors that are elected to represent all of the residents of their wards. Last week, we learnt that the Greens councillor for Paddington Ward supported the takeover of City Hall, the People's Place, by radical anti-Israel activists. Can you please advise the chamber of the risks this continued behavior poses to our community and our reputation as an inclusive city?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Wolf for the question because both this side of the chamber and Labor have condemned the Greens for their use of the council resources to advance their radical and divisive agenda. And they have been warned, not just by us, but by Australia's Security Agency, that this kind of anti-Semitic rhetoric that they are engaging in undermines our social cohesion. But just last week, we were treated to a tirade from the Greens councillor from Paddington Ward, following extremely unsettling scenes of an activist mob occupying this building. I'm not sure if this were her true beliefs or not, Madam Chair, because she appeared to be reading, as councillor Cassidy likes to say, through you, a pre-prepared speech. But what was very concerning was that she accused the Lord Mayor of defamation by calling out anti-Semitic rhetoric of the Greens. Now, I hope the lawyer did get in touch with her, Madam Chair, to explain that the strongest defense when it comes to defamation is actually the truth. Because I do agree with councillor Chong Wah when she said harnessing two thousand years of deeply horrific anti-Semitism solely for the purpose of political gain is one of the worst political abuses. But that is exactly what the Greens are doing. Having a policy on anti-racism is absolutely fine and encouraged, but you need to walk the walk, not just talk the talk, when it comes to policy as well. She was elected just over six months ago and so far has used her social media pages as a Paddington Ward councillor with provocative, using provocative intent like sixty seven years of Israeli occupation, genocidal invasion in Gaza, continuing Nakba in Palestine, and last week, when the People's Place was actually invaded by people here, where there were children, families and tour groups around, by a group of radical anti-Israelis activists. Not only did she just not really say anything about that, but we used to hear also from a former councillor in this place, the standard you accept is the one that you walk past, but councillor Chong Wah didn't walk past this one. She little hearted it on Facebook as well. Heart reaction for the mob that stormed City Hall on a weekend with families and children. Is that the message we want to our cities and our visitors? They work to support us. We are a vibrant and multicultural city, an Olympic city. We want Brisbane to be welcoming and inclusive and focus on bringing the community together, not tearing it apart. Sadly, it is clear the Greens councillor for Paddington Ward is more interested in pursuing Greens' radical ideologies than working for her local community.
Councillors, that now ends question time. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the eleventh of November twenty twenty four. One moment, please. Councillor Collier.
Chair, I move the suspension of standing orders in order for me to move the following motion. I move that this council reverses the program cuts to first five forever sessions in Brisbane City Council libraries.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy for the suspension of standing orders. All those in favor say aye. Those against, no. The nos have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right and nos to my left. Clarks, please ring the bell. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being seven in favor and nineteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Report of eleventh of November twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, eleventh of November twenty twenty four be adopted.
Seconded.
As we move by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the eleventh of November twenty twenty four be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I just wish to request that several items are taken serial item for debate. Item A and C together, and B and D together, so two separate debates, and all items taken serial item for voting.
Lord Mayor, items. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Point of order, Madam Chair. I seek the further following information regarding item C on page five. There is almost one point five million dollars allocated for the Suburbans Unsafe Package Four. Could you please, could the Lord Mayor please provide a list of the playgrounds and their locations that are funded with this package funding?
Thank you. So we will now start the debate at items A and C. Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Before I go on to the reports, I just wanted to update you, as I always do, on the lighting up of assets for great community causes, particularly the lighting up last night for, in purple, of the assets for the Lord Mayor's Community Trust Christmas Appeal. And as we approach that part of the year, obviously, we know that there are many people in our community in need, and that need is growing each year, and the Lord Mayor's Community, the Lord Mayor's Community Trust Appeal each Christmas raises critical funds that go straight to frontline charities that can support people in need at this time of year. Tuesday, tonight, we see the Story Bridge lit up in teal, as well as Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place, to support World Children's Day, which is celebrated on the twentieth of November to mark the date that the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Children were adopted or was adopted. This year marks the thirty fifth anniversary of that United Nations resolution, and something we should acknowledge and celebrate. Wednesday is Transgender Day of Remembrance, where our assets will be lit up in white, blue and pink to support Transgender Day of Remembrance and those, obviously, of our transgender community that have passed or lost their lives. Thursday, purple once again for Pancreatic Cancer Month, and this is usually held on the twenty first of November each year. Pancreatic cancer is one of the most deadly cancers in the world, and this event helps to raise awareness and supports research for those diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. On Friday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in yellow to support Jared Lyle Yellow Day, which is also supported by the PGA. It helps raise much needed funds for the challenge, and this is devoted to helping children and families living with cancer. Friday, City Hall will be lit up in red, white and green for the National Day of Lebanon. And Lebanese National Day is the eighty first anniversary of, eighty first anniversary of the Republic of Lebanon being created, an important day for our Lebanese community here in Brisbane. Saturday and Sunday, the assets will be lit up in blue for the Australian PGA Tour, which is obviously happening here on the weekend. I also wanted to update councillors on my visit last week to the city of Lausanne. I attended a three days, three business days event over there involving the World Union of Olympic Cities Annual General Meeting, and also the Sports Summit. And also, there was a visit meanwhile to the Hess Manufacturing Facility that are doing a great job manufacturing our Metro vehicles for us. The, the trip, obviously, a long way to go, involved a day and a half to two days of traveling in each direction and then three days on the ground, effectively. On the Monday, the eleventh of November, that was the date of the Annual General Meeting of the World Union of Olympic Cities. The World Union of Olympic Cities is the only entity that gives Olympic host cities present and former the opportunity to engage and build relationships and learn from each other. And the importance of this event and this meeting is it, it only happens once a year, but it's an opportunity from, for representatives from cities from all around the world that have hosted the Games or are going to host the Games, to build relationships and to learn from each other. And with other Olympic opportunities, they don't generally happen at the city level, whereas this event and this organization is specifically designed for cities, for local government, to interact, to build relationships and to learn from each other. And so the key purpose of my visit was to develop relationships in those key cities that we need to learn from. And that involved a range of meetings and discussions that helped establish some of those worthwhile relationships. My very first meeting was with two representatives from the International Olympic Committee. The first was Marie Salios, who's the Corporate and Sustainable Development Director at the IOC, and also Tanya Braga, who is the head of the Olympic Games Impact and Legacy Unit of the IOC. We discussed a range of matters, including the current discussion around the stadium that is going on, housing Elevate Twenty Forty Two Legacy Plan, bipartisan agreement on the new independent authority, just to update them on the process going forward. We discussed the ongoing Paris legacy, we discussed sustainability, and particularly the discussion around transport and even down to the detail of food provision at the Olympics. You'll remember, there was a little bit of controversy over protein, shall I say, and the provision of protein for elite athletes. And it was quite interesting, their perspective was that every Olympic Games, there's always a debate about transport and food. It's just one of those ongoing things at every Olympic Games, and they'll continue to tweak that and learn from those lessons. When the, the meeting officially opened for the World Union of Olympic Cities, I was given the opportunity to introduce myself and Brisbane to all of the cities. It's the first time that we've had the mayor of Brisbane attend. Krista, as the deputy mayor, has attended previously, but it was a good opportunity to get to know the, the different host cities, but also to update them on Brisbane's journey so far, how we're going, what the challenges are and what happens next. I have to say, the, the response and the feedback from the other cities was incredibly warm and welcoming. And some of the cities that, you know, some of them hadn't hosted the Games for, you know, forty or fifty years, but are still actively engaged in making sure that they keep those relationships going amongst Olympic cities and learn from each other. And there's lessons, not just from recent Games, but also Games that have been held a bit longer ago as well. Following the event opening and the presentation that I made about the Brisbane twenty thirty two Race to Gold, I updated them on councillor Murphy and councillor Wine's, the document that we released just recently, our Race to Gold, which talked about the transport legacy that we can deliver between now and the Games if we get that support from all levels of government. They were very impressed with that type of aspiration. One of the first presentations that we had was a multi-stakeholder presentation on the Paris twenty twenty four Games and the lessons and learnings from that. Now, councillor Adams has already provided a great deal of detail and information about her observations and, and what has been observed from Paris. But it was also interesting that this included a presentation, not just from the city of Paris, but also the city of Saint Denis, which is obviously adjacent to Paris, but is the, the home council area for the main Olympic stadium. And so they were involved in that presentation as well, and it certainly was clear that there were multiple councils involved in, in the preparation, multiple councils that benefited from it, and particularly Saint Denis, which was traditionally seen as an economically challenged part of the Paris region, was able to deliver a great legacy for their community in many different ways. I had a great discussion with Sebastian Greizmer, the director of Lausanne Olympic Capital Foundation, and he was talking about the work that they were doing with all of the sports federations. Many of the global sports federations are based either in Lausanne or Geneva, just within a short distance of each other. And he talked about the, what they do to attract those sports federations to that area. And he was very encouraging about the opportunity for Queensland to start to attract some of our national sports federations here to our state as a result of this Olympic opportunity. Why should they be in Canberra? Why should they be in Sydney? Why should they be in Melbourne? Why shouldn't they be in the Olympic capital, Queensland and Brisbane? And so that was a very, I guess, welcome discussion and were keen to start working with some of those national federations to see whether any of them are planning to relocate their offices in the coming years and whether we can do anything to help them relocate to Queensland and Brisbane. I had a, an interesting discussion with Vincent Dumas, who's the Sports Marketing Manager from Tourism Montreal. And among other things, we talked a little bit about Olympics, but we also talked about the fact that Montreal has the sister bridge to the Story Bridge, the Jack Cartier, Jack Cartier Bridge. And they just put a lot of work into restoring and upgrading their bridge, so I made an important connection with him.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
Been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favor say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
And he's going to put me in touch with their bridge restoration team from Montreal so that we can, we can develop a relationship there as well. The, the meeting then moved on to a presentation about the Move More Initiative in Paris, which is about getting the community to be more active and healthy. And one of the legacies of the Paris Games was increasing physical activity in the community. And it's interesting, in a, in a sports-loving nation like Australia, it's easy to think that everyone loves sports as much as we do, everyone gets out as much as we do. But you've got to remember, they don't. Not only don't they love sports as much as we do, the weather is rubbish in a lot of other places and like you, yeah, you, you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna be out exercising in many of those other cities. So they're, one of their key legacy things was to get people active and moving, and it was a target of just thirty minutes of activity a day, and they were able to achieve some important things there. There was also another presentation on legacy systems, followed by a presentation on the IOC's Impact and Legacy Strategic Approach. Now, it's important that we remind ourselves that the IOC has developed new norms. And those new norms are fundamentally about ensuring that the Games adapt to the needs of a city, rather than the city adapting to the needs of the Games. And so always in the past, the IOC was very prescriptive about what you had to deliver and what you had to build for the Games. And they would say, you need this. And they would say, you need this kind of swimming venue, you need this kind of major stadium, you need this kind of, you know, facility for all kinds of sports, you have to build it, you have to build it new, and we don't really care what money you spend on it, because this is our requirement. Now, they've changed that, and it's very important to remember that they don't require us to build all new venues, and they don't even require us to build a new stadium. And they were very clear, and they said, if, if you're talking about the IOC's requirements, you don't need a new stadium. But you need to decide as a community on whether you need a stadium or not, for your own use, not for the Olympics, but for your own purposes. And so, you know, from their point of view, that's entirely up to us, it's a decision for us. And as I've said before in this chamber, we have two stadiums at the moment. We have a rectangle stadium in Suncorp, and we have an oval stadium at the Gabba. The Oval Stadium is in ongoing need for our city, but the Gabba will reach the end of its life by 2030. And the fact that that is before the Games rightly brings on the discussion about, well, you know, what, what happens next. But I think everyone agrees that we need two stadiums in Brisbane on an ongoing basis. How we get to that outcome, obviously, is the discussion that has to be had going forward over the next hundred days or so. But they made it very clear, they're not requiring us to do anything in that respect, and that it is up to us, as a city and as a state, as a community, to decide what we want as our legacy, whether we need a stadium, they're certainly not going to tell us that we need this or that. I then had a meeting with Pierre Rabadon, who's the Deputy Mayor of Paris, and also some reps from the city of Paris. It was a great discussion. He gave some very frank advice on the absolute critical importance of collaborating between all the different stakeholders that are involved. And, you know, Paris is a region, they have different councils that were involved, they also had different levels of government that were involved in things like transport, and so there was a critical need for stakeholders to communicate. And he also pointed out that there are always going to be surprises that come up, unexpected things that happen. And the way that they are resolved is by having great communication channels in place, knowing who to pick up the phone to, knowing who to call when something unexpected happens and goes wrong, knowing, you know, who's responsible for what. And when it comes to his advice, which was very practical in that respect, it was also made clear that there are different, there are different responsibilities for all three levels of government in this process, and there's always overlapping between the three, but the critical thing is those communication channels and relationships. And that's fundamentally what that visit was about to La Zan, is developing those relationships. So we'll keep in touch with Pierre and the representatives from Paris City, just as we will from other host cities. The meeting progressed on to the formal AGM of the World Union of Olympic Cities, and this is obviously the event that happens once a year, the formal part of the meeting, not including any presentations, but it was clear at that formal AGM that a number of the members of the executive of the World Union of Olympic Cities were going to be stepping down going forward, and they, or they had reached their term limits. There is a length, a maximum length of time that you can serve on that executive committee. And it was made very clear to me, and it's been made clear to the Deputy Mayor, that they would very much like Brisbane to put themselves forward, to be on the executive of the World Union of Olympic Cities going forward. And so I can confirm today that we will be putting our hand up next year to make sure that we nominate for that position. It will be about this time next year, I understand, where Brisbane has the opportunity to join the executive of the World Union of Olympic Cities and take a leadership role in that organisation. And that was something that was very welcomed by the other cities that were involved. From that meeting, that night, we went on to inspect the World Archery Excellence Centre, which was a short drive from Zan. And I had no idea there was a World Archery Excellence Centre, but it's absolutely fascinating, and it's been a great legacy for them in that city. The following day, I met with Christophe De Kepper, who was the CEO of the IOC, so one of the very top people in the IOC. And we, we had originally planned to catch up for around thirty minutes, but that turned out to be more like fifty-five minutes by the end of it. And the meeting was only limited by the fact that we had to go to our next engagement, but that was a really worthwhile conversation where it was, it was confirmed again at IOC headquarters that the IOC is not asking us to adapt to the Games, they're asking the Games to adapt to us. And so that was reinforced. And so we need to decide as a community what that legacy is that we want to see out of the Games. We adapt the Games to suit us, to leave the legacy that we want to see, rather than meeting the requirements of the IOC. And so it's been completely flipped on its head from previous host cities, and that is a good thing. We then went on to the Smart Cities and Sports Summit, which was held at the International Basketball Federation, which was, it's, it's quite close to Geneva. This is like, it was like a piece of America in Switzerland, the world headquarters of basketball. And as you walk in, there are people playing basketball out in the courtyard, an amazing building with the, effectively, the world leadership of international basketball in one place. And I was able to have a meeting with George Gabajosa, who's the Vice President of the International Basketball Federation. He pointed out that in Paris, around ten percent of all ticket sales for every sport were actually for basketball. Now, there's in excess of thirty-four, thirty-five sports all up, but ten percent of all the tickets sold were for basketball events. So this is a big mover and shaker when it comes to the Olympic movement and world sport, and there's going to be great demand for basketball tickets in Brisbane. And there's a great opportunity that we have here to work locally with our basketball federation, to continue to grow the sport of basketball. One of the things that we know will be developed as part of our Olympic Games legacy is multiple facilities that can include basketball courts will be developed. They'll be developed in various parts of the region, supplementing existing facilities. And there's a great opportunity to really work closely with the sport of basketball, because it is growing rapidly, is in great demand, and it will be a big part of our Olympic experience here in 2032. There was a presentation that I made called Building Early Bridges, and it was an opportunity for Brisbane to update people from that Sports Summit on our Race to Gold and the experience so far. As part of the, as part of the presentation, there was also Jackie Barrett, who's from the IOC, and she was part of the, the selection committee effectively.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
Move for extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
Jackie Barrett was part of the, the selection committee that approved Brisbane's bid to be the host city back in 2021, and it was great to catch up with her again. The last time I, I saw her, I think, was in Tokyo in 2021. She was keen to hear our experience since then, and to see how the new norms were playing out in reality, and also what we could learn from each other when it comes to finessing that process to make sure that future host cities can have the best possible experience when bidding to host the Olympic Games. There was a presentation on developing active, active communities, there was another presentation on innovative sports and technology, including an interesting discussion about esports, a controversial one. Yeah, it's, it look, it's one of those things, but esports, computer games being classed as sports, so yeah, it's a thing. So, you know, if you're one of those international skiing champions that can actually do a computer game and skiing, there's now going to be international competitions for you to compete in, so. There was also a, a great presentation on evaluating the impact of major events, especially like the Olympics, when it comes to the initial reports that are done and then tracking that impact and the benefit over time, and the importance of keeping the data and making sure that the community is brought on the journey as to, we don't just produce an impact report in the beginning, but we track this through and actually map and, and point out what the, what the positive impacts are of major events. And we've seen this in Brisbane before, starting off with the 1982 Commonwealth Games here, which had a positive impact, followed up by Expo 88, which had a positive impact. And we want to make sure that the Olympic opportunity also has a positive impact. On the Wednesday, I travelled to Belloc, where the Hess manufacturing facility is. This is a family-owned business, but an impressive family-owned business, and one that has been operating for a hundred and forty years. Now, it's interesting, because a lot of companies have in recent times moved to electric buses and electric vehicles. Hess has been doing it for decades. And the reason they've been doing it for decades dates back to, and Brisbane has this experience as well, a number of cities made the decision to remove their trams. And when the trams were taken out, they had overhead power lines. And what did they put in after the trams were taken out? They put in trolley buses. These are electric buses that have an arm that comes up to the electric wires, and are powered by the electric wires. And so Hess has been manufacturing electric buses for decades, long before all of the Johnny-come-lately manufacturers have suddenly got into electric vehicles, because there's a, there's a trend towards it right now. They've been doing it for decades. They are respected as a world leader when it comes to electric buses. And those electric trolley buses have also had battery power sources as well, because a trolley bus needs to have its own independent battery, so that when it's not, not got the wires overhead, it can continue to operate back to the depot. And so there's great experience going back decades and decades, and it's one of the reasons why the Metro Pilot Vehicle has been such a raging success here, because they have put decades of technology into this. And it is a truly impressive vehicle, and to see the vehicles under manufacture for multiple European cities was an impressive sight. Now, we've got a, a big order in for up to sixty Metro vehicles, but they have hundreds under manufacture, and they in fact have a three-year pipeline of current orders. So their services, their technology, their vehicles are in huge demand around the world, particularly in Europe. And this is not a technology that has not been tested or proven in real-life situation. And in fact, in the city of La Zan itself, you will see the Hess bi-articulated trolley buses on the streets, going back and forward, carrying large amounts of people. So it was good to develop that relationship with the owner of Hess. We discussed the long-term partnership that we're entering into, which goes well beyond the manufacturing of up to sixty vehicles. But also, as you can see in the reports today, it includes an ongoing arrangement for them to supply parts for us going forward for these vehicles for many years to come. And so this is a long-term relationship we're entering into with Hess, or we have entered into with Hess, an important one for Brisbane's mass transit future. And so the thing that struck me about this company is that it didn't come across as a large multinational corporation. It came across as a humble family business that excelled and that produced amazing, amazing products and amazing vehicles. And it, it was actually a confirmation to me that we have made the right decision with that vehicle. And just seeing it manufactured and seeing the team behind manufacturing gave me a great heart. Terms of the items in front of us here, we've got, I'll, I'll start with item A and item C. Item A is the Major Amendment to City Plan, Industry Mapping, and item C is the Contracts and Tendering Report for October, uh, for, sorry, for September. Item A is all about our industrial supply and mapping as a city, and that includes from construction and manufacturing through startups and home-based businesses. Industry continues to evolve and change in our city, and obviously, we need to continue to update our planning for industry and the types of industry that need to be accommodated in our city. We're an important trade hub for Australia's primary industries as well, with some of the busiest ports and airports in the country. We have continued to demonstrate our ability to be bold, resilient and innovative in the, in the face of challenges, while also being willing to evolve and transport where required, transform where required. It's imperative that we consider how we use industrial land in Brisbane to ensure the demand of these areas does not outstrip supply and diminish our capacity to support growth and jobs. We also need to give traditional businesses an opportunity to further establish themselves while allowing industrial businesses of the future a chance to call Brisbane home as well. One of the actions from our industrial strategy, called Our Productive City, was to review the mix of industrial zone land within our major industrial areas, to make more land available for cleaner industry, warehousing, logistics and distribution. As part of this amendment, there were changes to zoning whereby properties from General Industry C will be converted to General Industry B to better align with expected trends in industrial demand, from smaller warehousing and logistic operations in particular. Additionally, there are changes to council-owned properties whereby they're being rezoned to open space or conservation zones, as the land is used for drainage, biodiversity or water corridor purposes. Madam Chair, this is the first step for this amendment. It will now be sent to the Minister to undertake a state interest review, and then, once that occurs, council will undertake public consultation on this proposal. Item C is the Contracts and Tendering Report. Fifteen out of sixteen contracts were awarded to local suppliers, being ninety-three percent of the contracts. And so far in the financial year, ninety-five percent of all contracts have been awarded to local suppliers, with a total spend of over $500 million through local suppliers. The contracts involve a new operating agreement for e-scooters and e-bikes with Neuron, following our termination of the agreement with Beam, a significant refurbishment of the Kenmore Community Centre, Package Four of the Sun Safe Suburban Playground, and I'm happy to read out the list or table the list of playgrounds. So I can say that the park, the parks in which will be rolling out as part of this package, Borridgey Place Park, Callumvale, Sunflower Crescent Park, Callumvale, Bowie's Flat Park, Camp Hill, Nell Jones OAM Park, Sandgate, Victor Grenning Park, Zilmia, Baramundi Street Park, Manly West, Ferguson Park in Ogura, John French Memorial Park, Gaythorn, De Soto Place Park in Forest Lake, Kialani Street Park in Forest Lake, Talana Place Park in Anala, Wallaroo Way Community Park in Dulandella, Jamboree Lions Park in Middle Park, Newcombe Park in River Hills, Alira Place Park in Eight Mile Plains, Wallaby Parade Park in Rochdale.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
Move for extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
Gumnut Nook in MacDowell, Lorena Crescent Park in MacDowell, Antrim Street Park in Acacia Ridge, CAO Sullivan Park in Acacia Ridge, Norma Crocker Park in Acacia Ridge, Albert Bishop, sorry, Vic Lucas Park in Belimba, Albert Bishop Park in Nunda, Warburton Park in Virginia, Racy Park in Hurston, Septa Row Park in Baden, Mirabella Street Park in Kemmoor Hills, Nancore Street Park in Chapel Hill, Plutus Park in Mount Crosby, Sherwood Arboretum, Ash Grove Sports Ground Park, Ash Grove, Curragh Malling Park in the Gap, Bellevue Terrace Park in St Lucia, Fig Tree Pocket Park in Fig Tree Pocket. I think that comes to the end of the list of this particular package. The contracts also include the provision for our comms and engagement services for a further two years. Also, council's corporate travel management. corporate travel management. I did want to say in relation to travel management, this is the figure for engaging a provider of travel management services. And I can point out once again that the level of corporate travel that we have done as an organisation has been significantly down in recent years and continues to be the case. And if you want to actually compare to previous Labor administrations back in the day, they were spending many times more, something like nine times more on travel from memory. Is that the case, Council Cunningham? And so we'll hear them talk about travel, no doubt, but we know what their record was and we remember the world tour that their mentor, Jim Sawley, went on just as he was about to retire. So let's hear what they say about travel. But the reality is, our travel expenditure has been down significantly and remains down significantly compared to historical levels. And I also did want to remind people that Council Cassidy, in attacking councillor Adams repeatedly, said it should be the Lord Mayor going overseas for Olympic travel, remember? He said that. He did say that. I wonder, I wonder if he's going to be supportive of my recent visit. We'll see. But let me predict, let me predict. So. In terms of those two items, I think, yeah, we're taking those as serial items. So I think I'll leave my comments at that.
Further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Given that an offer has been tabled by council in EBA negotiations, I move that the motion currently lying on the table that council implement 10 days reproductively for council employees come off the table for debate.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the motion from the 7th of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division?
The noes have it. Councillor.
Division?
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and nineteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these two items in this section of the debate. And it's nice to be talked about. It's nice to be, yeah, nice to be talked about by the LNP, I've got to say, even if now I, now I form the fifth, the fifth reason.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, I just had the opportunity to review the document the Lord Mayor tabled, which states it is a commercial incompetence document. Can the Lord Mayor confirm that the appropriate authority has given him permission to release this commercial incompetence document? Who that was and when it occurred? And can you assure us that the Lord Mayor has not breached legislation and the code of conduct by releasing a commercial incompetence document?
Thank you, councillor Johnson. We'll seek further advice. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So I now form the fifth, the fifth excuse as to why the failure, the failure has had to suspend, had to suspend Metro Services. Now, you would think, you would think that in the Lord Mayor's 40-odd minutes just then talking, he might expand a little bit on why we are seeing not just a one-year delay, but a two-year delay on the rollout of Metro Services, why he's not sacking councillor Murphy, who has admitted that he had a major, major blunder and a major failure in having to rip Metro Services off the road after just three and a half weeks.
Councillor Cassidy, I do bring you back to the reports, please.
Thank you.
A and C.
Thanks very much, Chair. So on clause I, we'll get to the Metro soon enough when we talk about clause B. No, clause D rather. So on clause I, the major amendment to City Plan Industry Mapping, what we see before us today is largely, I think in looking at the report before us today in line with the market and current, current industry uses within Brisbane, does obviously align with what is required for council to deliver as part of City Plan under the regional plan, the current regional plan. The long list of zoning changes that are included in the attachments mostly, I think exclusively, Industry C to B, Industrial C to Industrial B zoning, which does change the types of industry that can go into those areas. And also means that other buildings, other uses, particularly residential uses, can be closer to that particular industrial use on a lot of those sites. For example, the current Industry C zone means a precinct needs to be somewhere from 500 to 1500 depending metres from residential land, depending on the use, of course, with heavy industrial manufacturing, use of chemicals, things that create smell and noise and whatnot. But the newly appointed Zone B will mean that that reduces down to 250 to 500 metres because of the types of industry that generally goes into those is a much lower impact. So we understand this both in terms of a planning sense, understanding what is required in industrial uses and aligning the zoning for that. But it does also have, it does also have a housing outcome too, I guess as well into the future, which is something we are interested in this, in this item before us today. And I guess the reality is for us and for those of us who have industrial areas that used to house manufacturing as well, I know councillor Strunk does, I do in My Ward and councillor Allen and plenty of others around the city. Councillor Griffiths, of course, in Archerfield. And so we know that manufacturing's changed directly, a lot of us experienced this as well. And we're not seeing the sort of that big, loud, heavy industries in those areas as much as we used to and operating in as smaller spaces as they used to. We can, of course, thank the changing manufacturing landscape in Australia to successive LNP federal governments under Howard and Abbott and Turnbull, of course, for decimating manufacturing in Australia. So it has changed over the years. What was once an area for steel fabrication may now be a printing business, for instance, or kitchen display showroom, or maybe selling, maybe selling Winnebago RVs and things like that. So the changes do make sense to us and that those zoning changes now do reflect the changing industry uses. We also note, as well as the Lord Mayor talked about, that some of those parcels, and as was discussed in the presentation this morning, are being kept for drainage and environmental impact reasons as well. And that is very important. I know there are, there is a creek system that runs through the Virginia, Gibung and Virginia industrial areas, in the Northern Precinct, it's called, which are part of the Zilman Waterholes, which then flow ultimately through, under Sangate Road, through Nudgee College, out into Cabbage Tree Creek and then into the bay, making sure that those creeks and waterways are protected from unintended consequences of development and are also kept clear because they impact housing further upstream is critical as well. So that is something that we will be supporting today, these changes going out to consultation. Now, I do note they go out to consultation. So this will be a long process, I suspect two years or so. We will see this item come back next year, we believe, and then it'll get the state government come back. So we will also review what community feedback and industry feedback is provided to, to council during this consultation process and certainly encourage that be taken on board. On Contracts and Tendering before us today, a couple of contracts really stood out to me, some interesting ones there. The first, of course, is which, contract number five, the provision of communication and engagement services. There is a $4 million contract to spend on outsourcing more communications work. Now, we all know, we all know that councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor could have used a lot of help when it comes to communicating something. They clearly always had an intention that they were going to pull these Metro vehicles, if you, if you believe them, in one of the five excuses they gave. And one of those five excuses was apparently just poor personal communication on councillor Murphy's part. But $4 million to outsource communications work, and let's, let's just remember, this is on top of the 54 staff that Brisbane City Council directly employs in the city communication team, which we know is on top of the Lord Mayor's direct team of media and comms staff. Now, we also know the Lord Mayor has a large number of media advisers in his office at his own direction. He also has direct, basically direct control over those 54 staff in the Brisbane City Council City Communications Team by giving direction to the CEO. We know the reason, the only reason, and councillor Allen told us this directly, the only reason that the Lord Mayor's image and his message appears on the front page of the Living in Brisbane newsletter is because his office directed the CEO to include that on the Living in Brisbane newsletter. So we know he has direct control over the 54 staff in, in the city communications team, or his, his phalanx of media advisers in his own office. And now, through this contract of which the delegate, the CEO and senior executive managers and council carry out to outsource another $4 million worth of work to external communications, media and comms companies as well, is also at the Lord Mayor's discretion. And not to mention, you know, that's, that's, that's bad enough as it is, all more hallmarks of a regime, the control of the narrative coming out of the organisation, a tight control of the flow of information, but also just the cost, the costs to ratepayers. You know, when you look at the, the hundreds of millions of dollars spent on labor hire and temporary, temporary workers that are used in increasing numbers to divide and conquer a council workforce, to dilute the power of collective action in council and offer, offer pathetic wage increases and try to gut redundancy provisions. But the Lord Mayor also, while he does that, contracts out that work, is spending millions and millions of dollars advertising his own personal messages out there. And there is no line, there is no line that the Lord Mayor is not willing to cross when it comes to his own personal image. When you look at this work as well, in, in, as I said, having, having over 50 staff at their direct disposal, this regime here, this LNP regime in council, still finds the need to spend $4 million. You would hope that was a typo and you'd hope that also, you know, sometimes you see the total schedule of rates and then one of those contracts out of that might be only a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Not in this case. They don't intend to underspend one cent of the $4 million in external communications work because it's in the LNP's interests. The other one, which is a, an important one, because it also goes to a, another stuff up on this LNP regime's part, not, not to the scale of the Metro, of course, but it's the contract toward e-scooters and e-bikes here in Brisbane to Neuron Mobility. So we found out recently, of course, that Beam Mobility were.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move for an extension.
Second.
Move for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So Beam Mobility were awarded this contract previously. Of course, we know of the litany of issues that were there. They're now flogging off those scooters to anyone who will buy them. We see this contract come through today to issue an operating agreement for Neuron. So there's no tender process for this. They were the third best option, I guess, after Lime and Beam originally, according to, according to council. So they, they get the Guernsey now. I certainly hope, certainly, you would certainly hope that, given there were absolutely no checks and balances, no accountability whatsoever in the previous scooter contracts, council had no processes whatsoever to check the number of scooters that were deployed in streets. You certainly hope that has been rectified and that is not the case any more before we're entering a deal with a new provider. And when I say deal, it is a hell of a deal. It's not just, it's not just that they, they sort of get to deploy scooters on the streets and are providing some public service. People obviously pay to use these. And those companies are paying council a significant amount of money. Now, we know, we know that councillor Murphy can't count, but maybe, we certainly hope, as I said, the system's been put in place to properly verify that data. And we know, I can't say the figure, of course, but I think that has previously been released. The fee, the fee per scooter has been released by the LNP. And I guess if you know how many scooters there are, you can do the calculations. I'm not going to do that today. I'm not going to release that. But we do know that overall, across all of these scooter, e-scooter and e-bike contracts and operating agreements, council, the ratepayers of Brisbane, are receiving millions of dollars in revenue. So this, this contract is a revenue basis contract, not a cost-based contract to the ratepayers of Brisbane. So the argument for setting up a scheme in which scooter and e-bike companies pay council a fee to operate on public land, predominantly on our footpaths and bikeways, was that revenue coming in would be spent, used to improve those facilities for people using them. Not just people using these devices, but people who have to interact with these devices where they are deployed. Now, no one can argue that there's been any improvements in the footpath space in the CBD, in the inner city with the deployment of these, absolutely not. In fact, the only changes we've seen on, on inner-city footpaths is designated parking areas, which take, take footpath space away from pedestrians for these scooters. We've seen no improvements there. And, and in suburban areas where they've been deployed, down in Wynham Manly area, in Mai area, in the Sangate, Brighton, Forshaw area, and expanded into around train stations, including Deegan Train Station, I know in councillor Collier's area, and I think Eight Mile Plains and councillor Huang's area, there has been no dedicated funded upgrades to bikeway or footpath infrastructure as a result of these scooters being rolled out. So what we know is that by having these things on the footpaths, council is receiving millions of dollars in revenue for, for hosting them there and allowing these companies to operate. But communities that are having them and are having to interact with them are not seeing any return on that at all. And there's no transparency. You know, we know this, these millions of dollars is going into, you know, what we call consolidated revenue. And that money could be being spent on opening parties. Maybe it is, though technically spending it on active transport, I guess, because they spend it on the opening party at the, at the Green Bridges, the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, and they're about to spend it on, on the Kangaroo Point one. Maybe they spent that on the Metro opening party. I wonder if they're going to have a closing party for the Metro now. I wonder if they'll invite everyone back. It was only $45 a head.
Councillor Cassidy, please come back to the report.
For a closing party. But so the, the millions. But, so the millions of dollars of which is brought in, there's no transparency where that goes, right? No one on that side of the chamber knows where that money is going. They'll probably all just say, oh, it goes on all of the things, you know, the SEF funding that everyone shares in and the bikeway funding, but who really knows about that? And this is a very specific stream of funding that comes in, and it should be spent on very specific things. So I, to that end, Chair, in closing my remarks here, I would like to move that standing orders are suspended to enable me to move the following motion, that council invests the revenue from the operating agreements for e-scooters and e-bikes in Brisbane directly on active transport infrastructure, including wider footpaths, new footpaths and bikeways.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cassidy to suspend standing orders and seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and nineteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Further speakers, councillor Adaman. Councillor Adaman, can you please put your mic on?
I'm very sorry, I thought I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C, contracts and tendering, specifically in relation to one of the contracts for a project in the Pullenbale Ward, the refurbishment of the Kenmore Community Centre at 98 Brookfield Road. The awarding of this contract is a significant moment. It means that there will be shovels in the ground next January, with an anticipated completion date in June, weather permitting. Hopefully, it will also mean an end to the negativity from the federal Greens member who has politicised this project against council, despite knowing full well that there were processes that needed to be followed and extensive consultation to be undertaken. Unlike her party, we don't tell people what we think is good for them. We listen and act upon the feedback that we receive. Chair, it was important that we took our time and liaised with all three of the tenants at the Brookfield Road site. They've been Menshed West, Kenmore Bridge Club and E-Waste Connection to establish their priorities and to see what could and couldn't be done within the $1.6 million budget. It was also important that we got this right to ensure that all three tenants benefited from the allocated funding. After being briefed by council officers a couple of weeks ago on the concept plan, I'm in no doubt that we have equally shared the love between all three, and in doing so achieved maximum bang for our buck. Chair, allow me to summarise the range of improvements that we are about to deliver for our three tenants. The Bridge Club will have an open playing space to accommodate 14 playing tables, more than what they currently have. A kitchen and new ambulance toilet will be included, along with a new covered outdoor seating area. E-Waste Connection will have exclusive use of the building opposite its existing workshop for additional office and storage space. A new ambulance toilet will also be included in their building. And Menshed West will have a new dust extraction system installed and their kitchenette will be upgraded. The building located between Menshed and the Bridge Club will be rebuilt and include a communal meeting space, car dealing room, an area for the Men's Shed tech hub, a PWD toilet and two ambulance toilets. Chair, finally, some thank yous to those who have made this happen. First, to the former member for Ryan Julian Simmons, who secured the initial $1.5 million federal grant for council to deliver these improvements. Second, to the tenants for their input, persistence and patience in getting to where we are today. Thanks particularly to George at the Bridge Club, Gerald, Neil and Phil at Menshed and Monique at E-Waste. When the calls and emails started to dry up in recent months, I knew that we were getting close to a design that everyone was happy with. And last but not least, to council's connected communities team, ably led by Julie Byth and Mitch Barlow, who worked with all three tenants to achieve the outcomes that will benefit the many local residents who use the Kenmore Community Centre. They listened, were transparent in their dealings and communications with all three groups, and were flexible, and for that I thank them. I look forward now to watching these works take shape in the coming months with the official opening in June. Thank you.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. So further speakers on items A and C. Councillor Johnston.
Oh, no, point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Yes, Madam Chair, I note that earlier today, the Lord Mayor published a commercial and confidence document, and we've not had a ruling from you about this, so can you please advise what action you're going to take?
Councillor Johnston, I told you already that I'm seeking advice, I didn't put a time limit on that, so I'll provide that when I have it. Further speakers on A and C. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items A and C, and I'll start with item C, the contracts and tendering report. What's very clear with this administration is, well, I think the shortcuts that they are taking with the delivery of council projects and services, and this is where, of course, their failure to undertake proper due diligence, scoping of projects, leads to significant problems down the track. And that's pretty evident in what we're seeing today with some of the items in the contracts and tendering report. And I'll start with the operating agreements for e-scooters and e-bikes in Brisbane. Now, whilst it's a secret how much money council is spending on this contract, the bigger problem is, that I quote, "council's entered into directly following council's decision to end the contract with Beam Mobility, which was selected as a result of a full tender process in December 23. Due to the recency of the tender process, it was deemed to be most advantageous, council kept the most advantageous offer from that tender." So a year ago, council entered into an agreement, sorry, an assessment of projects. Out of that was a stuff-up, one of the providers clearly went out and deliberately breached the caps that were in those contracts. So we can see that that assessment and the management of that contract that flowed from that decision in December last year was not well handled by council and led to serious problems with breach of contract that were later identified by council. But instead of going back to the market, instead of putting more rigorous safeguards around the selection of tenderers, Brisbane City Council has gone back, picked up Neuron. I think Neuron's been a supplier to council before and we ditched them, but now they're back. And we are left with the fact that the completely incompetent LNP administration are simply going back to Neuron, a Singapore-based company, to deliver more e-scooters and e-bikes around Brisbane. Meanwhile, has this administration taken the time as part of this, well, they didn't do a new contract or a new expressions of interest, have they done anything to address the safety concerns of the many people who are either dying or being injured through the inappropriate use of e-scooters and e-bikes? And that is simply the number of accidents and hospitalisations that are occurring around the city. So has council done anything to address the safety concerns as part of the revision of the contract? No, they haven't. Have they done anything in the contract to determine whether or not we need to put safeguards around the capping of scooters and e-bikes? Well, we don't know because it's a secret contract. Have they put any management arrangements in place to monitor these contracts, to make sure that they are being overseen properly by council so that ratepayers aren't being ripped off as they were by the previous supplier? We don't know because this is a secret contract that we don't have any details about, that there was no competitive process on, and these guys have just gone out and picked one. I mean, it's not leading to good outcomes for the city. It's not, it's just not. Meanwhile, we see these bikes just strewn all over the streets everywhere, causing trip hazards for people. The geo-fencing about where they're supposed to go, well, that was a big fat lie, and we know that, because even though the council officers came out to my office and they said, yes, the bikes can only be left in areas that are geolocated, well, that wasn't true, it's only inner city areas where that happens, so those bikes can just be dumped anywhere. This council won't even take responsibility for the trip hazard on the footpath. If you ring council and ask for urgent assistance for somebody in a wheelchair or a blind person, they simply refer you to the provider. So this council has commercialised our footpaths without any safeguards in place. People are dying, people are getting hurt, and the ratepayers of Brisbane are being put at risk and being ripped off. All of these things have happened-
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item C, and in particular, the Suburban Sun Safe package, supply and installation of shade sales. Shirena Council is dedicated to ensuring that every playground in Brisbane has adequate shade coverage within the coming years to create safer, healthier outdoor spaces for children across our beautiful city. This initiative, the Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Programme, has seen wonderful enhancements to local parks, and last year in the Walter Tail Award, this included the Gayet Park at St Lucia and Acacia Park in St Lucia. I've had so many locals provide positive feedback on how this has really enhanced the experience for their children in local parks. Already, Brisbane City Council has installed shade sales at 116 parks to allow the community to enjoy playgrounds for longer each day, all year round. This programme is focused on increasing sun safety at playgrounds. Okay, so depending on the site, I have been told that shade covers can be added around mature trees, which is really exciting, and will enhance sun protection. And also, I understand where there is a shortfall of shade, tree plantings adjacent to playgrounds will be investigated for long-term natural shade. There's also many health and safety benefits to this programme. The shade improvements aim to significantly reduce children's exposure to UV radiation during outdoor play, and by lowering UV exposure, the programme contributes to reducing the risk of children developing skin cancer later in life. So I'm delighted in 2024/25 budget to be delivering two parks in the Walter Tail Award that will be receiving new shade sales. The Bellevue Terrace Playground at Bellevue Terrace Park in St Lucia, this park is surrounded by mature trees and will benefit from additional shade sales and will enhance the park's natural beauty and also provide extra shade for visitors to the park. A Rogie Place Playground at Fig Tree Pocket Common Park in Fig Tree Pocket is also located on a quiet street, and this park will also gain new shade sales. So like the Bellevue Terrace Park, these new additions will create more shaded areas for children to enjoy play on equipment and also make it ideal for families to enjoy picnics. So I'm really looking forward to seeing both of these roll out in the Walter Tail Award community. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I'll actually start on C and I'll work my way back up to A if there's time. Listen, I concur with councillor Wolf in regards to this shade sale programme. It's been a godsend to me because we haven't had to use funding for putting a lot of them up, that has occurred over the last two years. But I question maybe a little bit of the auditing as to some of the parks that actually maybe have been overlooked. And I only pick up one of those, one of those in my ward that I want to make mention of, so that maybe someone up in Brisbane Square or the Chair can sort of make note of it. And this is the one in Hawk Davis Park. Harold Davis was a returned serviceman who was part of a consortium that were putting together a housing for returned servicemen after the war, after World War Two, that is. And sadly, it was called Servicedon then, and then sadly, it didn't quite come together, but they did some construction, but they ran out of funds and the state government stepped in and it became a public housing project after that. But Hawk Davis was a very well-known man in the, the whole family actually was very well-known in the Anala area. And so this park, Hawk Davis Park, was named after to commemorate his great work in the community. And this park has some of the most magnificent ghostgumps, probably in my whole ward and I would say somewhat across Brisbane as well. But there is, a playground area is in a spot in the park which is in full sun most of the day. And so I just wanted to make mention of that because I think it's important that we pay due respect to Hawk Davis in this area. And if we can find some funding for that, maybe in the next round, if there's going to be a next round, but if there's not, if you can just let me know, and we'll try to find some money out of the award funding as well to do this, because it's one that has been overlooked and should be addressed. Now, if I can move on to item, item A, right. It was interesting to open up the attachments and have a look at all the overlays, have a look at the overlays in the industrial areas of Richlands in my ward anyways, because that's where all the industrial land is in sites. But there was one, when we opened them up, there was only one address, 399 Archerfield Road, that popped up in regards to the change of the industrial from C down to B, in other words, from 500 metres down to 250 metres, that you would be allowed to build a residential development. And I thought that was really interesting because the site actually is a honey manufacturer in Archerfield Road, a very well-known one, Capellana's, and I'm sure you've all had Capellana Honey over the years, terrific business, a local business that employs a lot of people. But they were captured, the new overlay was, they were captured with this new overlay. And so it was just interesting that when we looked at the new overlay, which sort of made sense, that there were some housing that had actually already been developed some years before, close to the manufacturing area for Capellana. And so- And so, but they weren't part of the original overlay, right? They were either overlooked or, I don't know, how to describe it. Anyways, so my worry is that these houses, and there's probably about 40 or 50, 60 houses that are in line, well, closer than 250 metres to the industrial address, that when they purchased those houses, of course, there was no problem. It didn't pop up on a search probably when they did the conveyancing, but now it probably will. So I just hope they won't be disadvantaged when they go to sell their houses and the due diligence, why their lawyers are done and find that they are part of the overlay now. But one of the good things that actually happened in this space as well was the fact that it was, there was an allowance made, I'll write it down here.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
I wish we'd have more than five minutes.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the major amendment, industry mapping. The industrial economy is a critical part of Brisbane's economy and advances in technology and knowledge industries change how manufacturing, logistics and servicing is carried out. In 2022, we released our Productive City, our industrial strategy for Brisbane, which outlines the need to continue to improve and adapt how industrial areas are used to remain globally competitive and to serve our growing city. The strategy outlined how the pandemic has created challenges for Australian industry and consumers, revealing our reliance on overseas manufacturing and exposure to international trade fluctuations. In response, many Brisbane businesses have re-examined supply chains and changed their operations and production lines. Additionally, increases in e-commerce is also driving demand for warehousing and logistics. Action 1.3 from the Industrial Strategy sets out to review the mix of industrial-zoned land within major industrial areas and other areas to make more land available for cleaner industry warehousing, logistics and distribution. And Madam Chair, this amendment is fulfilling that action. As part of addressing this action, a review into industrial demand was undertaken and found that across Brisbane's major industrial areas, there is an increase in demand for uses aligned with outcomes of the general industry B zone and they are uses such as logistics and distribution warehouses. As such, the zoning review balances the need to make more land available for cleaner industry warehousing, logistics and distribution, while also protecting areas of significant existing or potential future high-impact industry uses. 207 properties have been proposed to change zoning from general industry C to general industry B. This represents approximately 82 hectares of land or 6.6% of general industry C land and all are located within the Northern Industrial Area, the Australia Trade Coast or the South West Industrial Gateway. Madam Chair, I can confirm that all properties will retain existing use rights for current and active approvals and existing high-impact industry uses will remain at current levels of protection against encroachment of sensitive uses. Land currently owned by council that is used for drainage, biodiversity or riparian waterway corridors, they will also be captured in these changes and the general industry C zoning will change to an open space or conservation zoning to accurately reflect their use. This change is across nine properties in that particular example and that represents approximately 5.5 hectares. Madam Chair, the amendment also proposed changes to the industrial amenity overlay mapping. This overlay ensures any proposed development considers reducing the risk of inappropriate development of sensitive uses encroaching on existing industrial zones and uses. In investigating the proposed zone, changes will be made to existing high-impact industry uses which were identified in the general industry C-zoned land. As such, it is proposed to extend the overlay to these properties to ensure these businesses are adequately protected by the industrial amenity overlay. And this includes sites in Virginia, Coopers Plains, Archerfield, Acacia Ridge, Richlands and Waco. There is also a site in Nudgy where we are actually removing the industrial amenity overlay. So obviously where we've got a high-impact industry use, we need to have those overlays in place. But in the case of this particular location in Nudgy, the high-impact industry has ceased to operate and it's been replaced by a residential outcome. So that particular overlay can be removed. As Lord Mayor mentioned, the amendment package will now proceed to the state for state interest review and for approval for council to undertake public consultation. So to councillor Strunk's point, there is an opportunity for consultation. And Madam Chair, this is another example of the Shruna Council ensuring Brisbane has an even bigger slice of the evolving economy that will see industries become cleaner, more tech-savvy and call Brisbane home.
Further speakers. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to item C, contracts and tendering and in particular the operating agreements for e-scooters and e-bikes. Firstly, I just want to say council's shared mobility scheme does genuinely perform an important public service in making our city more connected. It offers those easy and convenient alternatives to driving for the some now 15 million people who have travelled on e-scooters and e-bikes in our city since the scheme began in 2018. Last year in December, we ended into next-generation operating agreements for shared devices with both Lime and Beam. These agreements, which commenced on the 22nd of July 2024, did allow up to 6,000 devices comprising 5,000 e-scooters and 1,000 e-bikes, split evenly between two operators. In August, following allegations of unethical operations by Beam, council conducted a review of device caps across the city and that review found that Beam systematically exceeded its device cap and as a result, council terminated its contract with Beam. Beam will cease being an e-mobility operator in Brisbane on the 2nd of December 2024 at midnight. This has left council's two-operator model, which encourages innovation and competition within the sector between the operators, unbalanced. As a result, council entered direct negotiations with Neuron Mobility, who submitted a very strong offer in the December 2023 tender process. This direct approach avoided going back to market with a full tender and was advantageous to council as Neuron achieved excellent non-price score and value for money during the last tender process. On the 15th of October, an agreement was approved and as a result, Neuron will re-enter Brisbane again on the 3rd of December 2024. Neuron first arrived in Brisbane in 2019 as our second e-mobility operator and they have since expanded across 12 cities in Australia. Recent studies found that around 43% of trips taken on Neuron devices replaced car journeys with nearly 13 million kilometres travelled on them to date. Their capacity to meet existing customer demand and to maintain service levels gave council a high degree of confidence that they would be an operator that we could trust. It also means that under this contract, council can continue to deliver the benefits of the scheme and that the scheme offers the community by supporting the growth of sustainable two-wheel transport in Brisbane. And we look forward to this new chapter with both Neuron and Lime operating our e-mobility scheme. We also had, Madam Chair, a number of falsehoods peddled when it comes to the scheme and some of the reasons behind this decision and some of the governance of this scheme. And we need to just put those to bed quickly. Councillor Cassidy said the council chose the third-best option as if that was a bad thing in a tender where we received dozens of offers from dozens of companies. The reality is, I don't know if councillor Cassidy understands how a tender works, but generally in council, we will rank all of the tenders and score them based on price and non-price criteria and that will lead to a top offer, a second offer, a third offer, a fourth offer, a fifth offer. And when you have your second-best offer punch out for obvious reasons, of course, then it makes sense to go with the runner-up. He criticised council with not having a system in place to check for vehicle deployment numbers. Well, we do. We do and we have, like every other city around the world that was deceived by Beam and that have also taken the same actions that this council has taken in selecting new operators and ending their relationships with Beam. And we've worked to make our systems more robust after this incident. We've moved to Mobility Data Standard 2, which is a new standard for mobility data and information sharing between providers and operators. An open-source, open-access data scheme. We've also joined the Open Mobility Foundation to be part of that governance process into the future. He also said there were no improvements to footpaths despite funding received from e-mobility revenue, which is of course absolute rubbish. Every councillor in this chamber spends money on footpaths in their ward and up until very recently councillor Cassidy didn't spend anything in his own ward. But recently, due to criticisms made in this chamber, he has started to spend money on footpaths, which of course we welcome. And I mentioned earlier in the chamber, $435 million over the last four years spent on active transport infrastructure, not including footpaths. Councillor Cassidy also, councillor Johnson mentioned that council didn't go back to market. Well, I've already explained, Madam Chair, that would have been a cost to council which we have avoided.
No further speakers. Lord Mayor, right of reply? We'll now put items A to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. The ayes have it. It's carried. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and seven abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Johnston, in reference to your earlier point of order, I have been advised that as the matter is no longer commercial in confidence, as the project has been completed and there is no commercial negotiations relating to it, that it is fine. Thank you. We'll now move to items B and D. Madam Chair, councillor Johnston.
The document and information the Lord Mayor released today is clearly marked as commercial in confidence and that requires a particular type of approval for it to be released. I understand the project. We all understand over the weekend. But the problem is that document had not been in the public sphere and it has been released by the Lord Mayor. And the issue is whether or not, under council policy, the appropriate authorisation to release that document has been given. So, Madam Chair, can you check whether the appropriate authorisation has been given?
Councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order. I have given my advice and my advice still stands. I am now referring councillors to item B. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I dissent in your ruling.
No, seconded. Moving on to item B and D. Lord Mayor.
So moving on to the next two items. Item B is the annual operational plan and quarterly progress report for the period ending September 2024 in accordance with the requirements of the City of Brisbane regulation. This is the first quarterly report for the financial year and includes statements of comprehensive income, financial position and changes in equity and cash flow for the first three months of the financial year. In these first three months, we can see that revenue is above budget and our expenses and capital expenditure are below budget during the initial period of the year. This is mainly due to the timing in expenditure across the transport and infrastructure portfolios, with these figures expected to materially align with the annual budget by the end of the financial year. Revenue was impacted by the timing of grants and subsidies, revenue relating to the federal government financial assistance grant, which was only received in July of this year but had been forecast to be received in the previous financial year. So federal government paid the grant late in a new financial year rather than the one that it was anticipated, which is obviously unhelpful and had a impact there. When we're expecting the paltry amount of federal government support that we do get to come in and then it's delayed by a financial year, that is not helpful. It shows that over $250 million in capital works were delivered in the first three months of the year out of a total of the $1 billion infrastructure budget. So $250 million in the first quarter, a billion dollars over the year. Obviously, that program's on track. And we see an incredible amount of infrastructure work and delivery going on, whether it's the Brisbane Metro, the ragingly successful first stage of Brisbane Metro, whether it is the Kangaroo Point Bridge, which is nearing completion and is in fact at about 98% complete at this point in time, whether it is the Moghl Road corridor upgrade, whether it is the Beams Road upgrade, whether it is the suburban park upgrades and projects that have been delivered, the Murray or the Brisbane International Cycle Park or Murray Cycle Park. There's a whole range of incredible work going on and being delivered out in the suburbs and work that will deliver a lasting benefit to the people of Brisbane. And also, it's important to point out that this level of investment that we're making is at record-high levels. No former administration of any colour has ever delivered more capital works than we are delivering right now. And it's a record program and it will deliver record benefits to the people of Brisbane and will continue to do everything possible to carefully manage the city's finances to make sure the budget stays balanced. We've been very clear and open about the fact that these have been challenging times financially. We've had the massive impact of global inflation and its flow-through to a range of projects and construction costs. We've had ongoing cost shifting from other levels of government, which has reached new highs or new lows, depending on your perspective, where we're now responsible for suburban botox clinics and injectables, where we're now expected to pick up the bill for state government reading programs in our libraries that should be fully funded by the state government, but they've been squibbing their responsibility. I could go on and on and on, but the cost shifting. You know, don't just take my word for it. Take the LGAQ's word for it. This is a problem for every single council. And so we're going to be increasingly pushing back when state and federal governments squib their responsibilities. We're going to hold them accountable. We're going to push back. We're no longer going to cover for them because the reality is we're expected to do more and more with just 3% of the taxation revenue in this country, with 81% going to the federal government and 16% going to state governments. And so we do a lot with a little when it comes to our budget. We're delivering record investment in infrastructure. We're delivering major game-changing projects, whether it's the successful raging success Brisbane Metro, the game-changing Brisbane Metro, the best public transport project of its kind anywhere in Australia, the most successful of its kind, the world-leading Brisbane Metro project. And we love to hear from the cheap seats. The one opponent of Brisbane Metro is piping up again, but the reality is... But the reality is, everyone else that knows anything about public transport is incredibly excited about this project. It's a fantastic project. The first four-week trial has been an incredible success with almost 100,000 people catching the services over those four weeks. And we're really looking forward to rolling out further stages of Brisbane Metro as we continue to gear up and get more, further deliveries of vehicles and also further training of drivers and gearing up the capacity to deliver further services in a staged way in the future. We're really excited about that opportunity. Item D is, speaking of metro, the SCP for OEM Spare Parts and Maintenance Support for the Brisbane Metro vehicles. This is an arrangement with HES as part of our deployment of the HES Lite Tram 25, the first of its kind in the southern hemisphere, the first of its kind in a subtropical environment, the first of its kind in a non-European city like Brisbane, and a really exciting innovation when it comes to public transport. A project which will change the game. It will blow out of the water. All of those people who think the answer to every question is light rail, because we've seen, the only thing light rail delivers now is a big fat pile of debt. Light rail, I mean, the Gold Coast Light Rail, it's become a farce in terms of how much that that project has cost and the disruption that it is generating. And now everyone's scratching their heads about what to do next because the budget has blown out so much. Here in Brisbane Metro, we announced the $1.5 billion Metro project in 2016. We made some changes to the project. We are bringing it in at $1.55 billion, and it'll be a fantastic outcome funded by all three levels of government. And try and say the same with a light rail project. You'll never do it. And the only mass transit solution that can be delivered for Brisbane in a timely and cost-effective manner is the Bus Rapid Transit Brisbane Metro solution. And so, this is the right project for Brisbane. The vehicle is the right vehicle for local circumstances. And as I pointed out before, HES has been manufacturing electric buses, not just in recent years, when everyone's been transitioning in recent years, but for decades. Forty, fifty years plus, they've been making electric buses, starting off with trolley buses. And right now, just in Switzerland alone, there are 863,000 people a day catching HES vehicles as part of the public transport network. When you include the other cities outside of Switzerland that are using these vehicles, over a million people a day are easily catching one of these HES vehicles. They are great vehicles. They are reliable vehicles. Many leading cities have, particularly in Europe, have signed contracts with HES, like the one that we're signing today. And this agreement will help cover the life of our metro vehicles, which is anticipated at approximately 20 years. And so, we'll make sure that we'll have an ongoing supply of parts and support from HES over that 20-year period. And so, the other part of the SCP is for maintenance support services from HES as well. There are plenty of things we'll be able to do to the vehicle ourselves at the Rochdale Depot with Transport for Brisbane staff and workers. And we've been busy working to gear up Australia's largest electric bus depot at Rochdale. But there are some things that will need particular support from HES on when it comes to the maintenance. HES not only runs a manufacturing facility, but they also provide spare part support and programming support as well. And I mention programming because the metro vehicles are effectively a giant computer on wheels. There is so much technology that goes into them and so much computer programming that's required as well. And so, getting that ongoing support is absolutely important. So, just like your iPhone needs an update-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
-HES vehicles will get an update on a regular basis as well.
Point of order, Chair. Can I move for an extension? For a second.
It has been moved for an extension by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Just briefly, just as, you know, other technology like your phone or computer needs an update, our HES vehicles go through regular updates. And that's based on not only Brisbane's requirements, but changes they're making to their global fleet as well and improvements they're making to their global fleet. And that optimizes the use of the vehicles, whether it's optimizing charging, whether it's optimizing vehicles for local conditions that, you know, are obviously different to Swiss conditions in many ways. That support is important and valued. And this SCP will allow us to deliver the best possible outcome for Brisbane residents by entering into an agreement, which is a long-term agreement, an initial period of 12 months, but a long-term agreement over 20 years to provide that support that we need. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on these two items before us today. And I'm glad, having reviewed the table document the Lord Mayor has provided in an effort to mop up some of the mistruths that have been peddled by councillor Murphy, particularly over the last 24 hours. And what it does do, what it does confirm that document, is that there was no end date. In black and white, it says when there's a start date.
Councillor Cassidy, I want to draw you back to items B and D. Not the trial, that's not in the report.
The metro is.
So, can you please? It is not. It is about the spare parts. Lord Mayor has the ability to go around the world. You don't. Please come-
What's item B, Chair?
Councillor Cassidy, I'm instructing you to come back to B and D, please.
What is B, Chair? What is item B?
Councillor Johnston.
It's a budget document.
I am asking you to not call out. And I do caution you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I refer to page 14, Programme One, Transport for Brisbane, Brisbane Metro. Provide bus and metro services. And I refer to the Lord Mayor's comments, of which there is a longstanding precedence in this place that we can refer to the previous speeches of previous speakers if they are referring to the documents before us. The Lord Mayor was specifically talking about item B and item D before us. He wasn't going around the world there. So, what I'm talking about is this monumental stuff up of the Brisbane Metro. We see in item B before us and in item D enormous amounts of expenditure, which is escalating, escalating to the point, Chair, that today, the Lord Mayor has just revealed that the ongoing cost of the metro, this is not the final cost of the metro anymore, the ongoing cost of the metro has now reached $1.55 billion. So, as of yesterday, in public statements the councillor Murphy was making, it was $1.52 billion. And today, the Lord Mayor is saying it's $1.55 billion. So, the document which he was just talking about- I wonder who is telling the truth? I don't know whether, and we can't say that they are lying, of course. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't say that in here. But maybe, maybe they actually believe the things they're saying. Maybe they actually are starting to believe, like, they're saying them often enough. Maybe they're starting to believe the things they're saying. Because apparently, apparently, you know, the media didn't know. Drivers didn't know there was an end date. Passengers didn't know there was an end date.
Councillor Cassidy, again, you're talking about the trial, and that isn't part of the discussion. Please come back.
What is the trial, then? I don't understand. What was the trial? If it's nothing to do with metro, if it's not the early rollout of metro, what is it? I mean, these documents before us today are shuffling money from program to program, item to item. I don't understand what on earth this so-called trial was if it wasn't the early rollout of metro. But I guess, case in point, Chair, you do make a point for me that it wasn't, in fact, the early rollout of metro. It, in fact, clearly wasn't the early rollout of metro because in the LMP knew behind closed doors that it was only intended to run for three and a half weeks. And the Lord Mayor seems to think it's a computer game now. The metro rollout is some sort of computer game. His comments suggested that he could just, you know, reset it, turn it off and on again. Maybe it would work. Maybe that's what they did in an attempt to fix all of these major flaws. But it certainly hasn't helped, and there is egg all over their faces. And in the words of-
Councillor Cassidy? I'm asking you to stop talking about that trial. I've asked you three times now. Please come back to items B and D.
I wasn't talking about it, I just said I moved on. Yeah, I clearly moved on. But in the words of the Courier-Mail, it's a massive fail.
Again.
A massive fail.
Councillor Cassidy, I am cautioning you.
Oh, no, there's plenty to come back on metro here throughout these documents, definitely. So, as we work our way through, we'll come to metro again. In clause B, the quarterly financial report, it's absolutely crystal clear, Chair, to anyone, that the cuts that have been implemented by this LMP regime, started by the decision this Lord Mayor made in October of 2022 to increase the spending and debt on the metro by $400 million, led to the cuts that he announced in October 2023. And what we have before us today in November 2024 are all of those political decisions that the Lord Mayor and his regime have made, and they are starting to bite in the community. There's a litany of cuts when you go through this document across the board. Except, of course, I do acknowledge, there are some program areas that are immune from cuts, particularly the metro project, because we've just heard today that that has increased from $1.52 billion yesterday to $1.55 billion today. They are ones that this regime has succeeded in dumping a whole lot more money into. And what the document before us shows is that the regime is trying to cover up their cuts to basic services with increases to those, particularly three large projects, of which we can pick apart a bit here. Now, cuts to drainage projects, this is one that should be of great interest to councillors. Just about every single councillor, I'm sure, has drainage projects that are sitting on a capital listing that council officers have determined are worthy of funding. They might be listed in the LGIPO or the LTIPO, or maybe they're just on a capital listing. They never get funded because those, that hundreds of millions of dollars in increased capital funding has to go onto the metro project. So, these documents show us that in this quarter, this quarter, there were two drainage projects completed. Across 190 suburbs in Brisbane, just two drainage projects this quarter. There were cuts to park maintenance, less potholes being filled, and less spent on community facilities. When you think about a stat like that, spending less on drainage, you just have to look at a photo like this, and I will table this photo at Rockleigh, which was taken Wednesday 13th of November, the day after councillor Griffiths brought a motion here calling on council to get on with the job of cleaning out Stable Swamp Creek. This is the result of the rain that happened the night after. Cars are underwater there. And council was, you know, the Lord Mayor was blaming and complaining in his LMP regime, saying somebody else should do all this work. And meanwhile, the residents of Brisbane are suffering in places like in Rockleigh. Thank you. So, what we see here is tens of millions of dollars less spent in this quarter compared to the same quarter last year. Capital expenditure has gone from $385 million in the same quarter last year to $259 million in the quarter that we are looking at here. And this is all the while ratepayers are forking out now nearly $2 million per week in interest and finance costs on debt to fund inner-city bridges and metro buses. The LMP haven't gone out and borrowed a heap of money to fast-track, you know, the building of suburban drainage, of bikeway projects, of footpaths, of community facilities. No. What the Lord Mayor did was go and borrow $400 million extra two years ago, which led to $400 million cuts a year ago. And we're now seeing, we're now seeing those cuts realized in the suburbs of Brisbane. And it is no wonder when you see, you wonder why, you initially wonder why they're slugging pensioners, these pension attacks on their rates bills, why they jacked up the fee for paying rates using a credit or debit card, why they jacked up fees and charges by 10% and rates by more than inflation. When you start reading these documents, it is no wonder. You don't wonder anymore why they're doing those things because they have to plug their black hole in this budget. So, despite the Lord Mayor's rhetoric just now and that this budget, including this quarter and this year's budget, is bigger than any previous year's budget, when you actually understand how they have operated budgets for a long period of time, you know most of the things they announce in each budget, which is entirely new, take two to three budgets to be carried out anyway because they're delayed. Those projects roll over. There's carryovers. And we saw in this quarter here, there were carryovers from the previous budget to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. Hundreds of millions of dollars of carryover. So, the Lord Mayor can get up and he can claim that the budget is so many billion dollars. We're not, it's hard to keep track of it anymore. It used to be 4.3, then it was apparently still 4.3 after a $400 million cut. And then it was less than $4 billion. But what we know each year, projects to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars are being carried over and included in new expenditure. So, ghost projects, exactly. I'll take that injection.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order?
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move for an extension.
Second.
It's been moved for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So, when you look at some of the things in the report before us, they should be of grave concern, not just to councillors, but the ratepayers and residents of Brisbane. One of the key lines early on in those first few pages in the table of accounts is where it says employee costs are down. Now, we heard from the Lord Mayor earlier today that he claimed employee costs were up. That's the reason he cut the First Five Forever program. He said employee costs are up. But here, it says employee costs are down, which we know is because there are less staff. Now, initially, we know there were less contractors and there were less casuals, despite them saying they wouldn't sack council casuals. The LMP sacked council casuals. We know they're using labour hire slightly less through that period of cuts. But we now know, we now know that from questions answered last week, that there are around 50 less permanent full-time staff today, now working in council than there were in August this year. So, that's a pretty alarming drop when you think that's only a two-month period. And what we hear from council staff working out in the field is that open roles aren't being replaced, backfilling for leave isn't happening. And these staff are being expected to do far more than they should be and far more than they are paid for. And yet, in the context of all of this, this regime offers an insulting wage increase and a reduction in redundancy entitlements in their EBA offer. What a way to reward your hard-working staff who are doing more but getting paid less for doing it, Lord Mayor. Now, some of the cuts are glaringly obvious. I'm sure we'll see after this, well, maybe we wouldn't. You'd expect to see LMP chairs getting up and falling into line and saying how these cuts are supposed to be good for Brisbane. They generally tend not to pop their heads up too much anymore. But how can that possibly be the case when the September 23 quarter had $385 million in capital expenditure and now we're sitting at $259 million? An enormous $110, $120 million reduction in capital expenditure and projects out in the suburbs of Brisbane. And of that $259 million of capital expenditure in this quarter, $139 million, let's round it up, say $140 million out of $260 million is for three projects. And I imagine if you ask most councillors in this place, they'd be able to tell you. They'd be able to tell you which ones. Metro, Mogal Road, Green Bridges. And it's always them. It's been them for years. So, the Lord Mayor can get up and say the capital budget for infrastructure is X hundreds of millions of dollars. We know the vast majority, more than any other, all the other hundreds and hundreds of other infrastructure projects, small and big, that are funded in Brisbane. These three projects make up more than all of them combined around the suburbs of Brisbane. They're riddled with cost escalations, delays, incompetent delivery, particularly the metro, particularly incompetent. It's just incredible. It blows your mind. And so, there's an awful lot, an awful lot. Obviously, you can say people who live around the Mogal Road corridor and benefit from that project will benefit. But there's a lot more people in Brisbane than just those that live around- But there's a lot more people in Brisbane than just those that live around there. And I guess when you look at this, you also understand then why ENCE reports have been so threadbare for so long. They, they are in all sorts of mess, all sorts of chaos in this LMP regime internally about what they can possibly do. And when the Lord Mayor can be bothered to turn up to debate things here in the chamber, we often find out there isn't much to talk about in terms of addressing those major challenges. Transport is one of them. But all we continue to hear from the Lord Mayor is what I have to say about the Metro, not what they plan to do in the future. It's quite incredible.
It's absurd.
Quite incredible. He's desperate, he's desperate for my approval. I'm not ready to give it yet. And he needs to work a lot harder for that. Now, you only need to look at the separate program areas, as I said, and compare these brutal cuts. I've talked about headline figures. But if you take, for example, infrastructure, were it not for councillor Davis losing responsibility for drainage in her portfolio area, and that's been shifted in infrastructure, there would have been a massive decline in, in the infrastructure programme. That's only been held up because an enormous part of Programme Three has been put into Programme Two, which means there have been enormous cuts in Programme Two to road, infrastructure, road safety upgrades, things like that. And in this construction environment, where week after week we hear the LMP drone on about how costs are increasing and how things are getting more expensive to deliver the longer, you leave them. Why would you add a decline in spending with an increase in those inner-city projects? And yet it's residents in suburbs that are missing out. So as I said, two drainage projects complete, just two in the city this size, is absolutely incredible. When you look across the program areas, there's a never-ending list of projects that have been cut this quarter compared to where council was this time last year. And, and it wasn't in a good spot then, which means these are particularly bad. There's $6 million less on active transport projects, $19 million less on road projects, $10 million less on parks, $2 million less for significant parks, a million less on tree and park maintenance, a million less on public health, that's less mosquito spraying. Six thousand less square metres of roads resurfaced, 3,000 less potholes filled, only one suburban park completed across all of Brisbane. 25% of the way through this year, and one single suburban park project has been completed. 250 less food audits, and yet they're going after businesses with food licences and food permits and jacking up their rates they have to pay and their footpath dining, pardon me, but doing less food audits as a result of that increased revenue coming from hard-working small businesses. 2,000 less graffiti tag removals? I'm shocked at that. I'd have thought the Wouses in the LMP would have been all over that. But, but 2,000 less graffiti tag removals, absolutely incredible. And they're hiding cuts to libraries. We heard that today. Some, some real somersaults there from councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor in claiming that there was some cut recently from the state government funding, although councillor Howard confirmed that there has been no cuts from the state government over the last five years. Funding has remained in place consistently for the last five years. Councillor Howard said in 2019, it was $711,000, and that has been a consistent figure each and every year. Now, while we see cuts from the LMP to library services, we see less librarians in libraries employed. We got that from Questions on Notice last week. We see the budget for tea and coffee cut in libraries. We see whiteboard mark, they're banned from buying, banned from buying whiteboard markers in libraries now under councillor Howard's leadership. Maker Space out of Carandale was booted under councillor Howard's leadership. And we see 25% of the First Five Forever Programme gutted from libraries and 25 fewer library staff employed in council now. That is an absolute shame. There was zero land purchase through the bushland levy, despite each and every ratepayer paying that levy each and every quarter. And we've seen reduced hours leading to reduced patronage at environment centres. Now, I raised this previously about the reduction in staff allocations at the Burnell Environment Centre, which is in my ward. Lo and behold, Chair, when you cut the opening hours of environment centres, you get less patronage at those environment centres. Wow. Who would have thought? Who would have thought the geniuses in the LMP couldn't have figured that one out? So we see this regime using all sorts of tricks to hide the truth from Brisbane residents. That happened last year, this is happening in this quarter here. And what we're seeing, you know, even in, even in figures like hiding the per capita debt, because we know that is increasing exponentially as well. That's now been removed from budgeting documents as well for the first time ever. It's just absolutely incredible. So we know, we know that the Lord Mayor and his regime do anything to avoid scrutiny and transparency. And if we're able to glean this and this information from these threadbare documents, you just wonder how bad things really, really are in council. Now, moving on to clause D, which is the significant contracting plan for Hess Equipment. Now, we see here before us today this contracting plan for tens of millions of dollars, which is expected to be spent over the next 20 years for the spare parts and maintenance of the Brisbane Metro.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order?
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move for an extension.
Second.
It's been moved for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. So next 20 years, spare parts and maintenance for the Metro, as I said. So interesting to see this one come up this week, just days after the Lord Mayor had been swanning around in, in Switzerland, visiting the factory where he happily gave up $300 million of Australian manufacturing and Australian jobs and doing a lot of shilling for Hess today. Spent a lot of time, slightly less time talking about Hess than he did about me, granted, but quite incredible. And I guess, you know, more contracts will be, be being offshored as we see, or maybe if the Metro maybe rolls out, who knows, maybe late 2025, maybe early 2026, who knows anymore? But once, once the fate of local manufacturing was signed away by the LMP and those local jobs were signed away by the LMP, of course, the parts and maintenance associated with Metro was going to have to happen this way and at an enormous cost to the people of Brisbane. And, you know, I'm sure councillor Murphy will get up and say they're going to open a local, a local operation here, which will be a shed and someone to distribute parts that are manufactured overseas and shipped in. That'll be the extent of, maybe it'll, maybe it'll happen in an industry B area that's rezoned from industry C. Maybe, maybe that's a good outcome of that. But it does make you wonder what could have been a more reasonable arrangement in terms of parts supplying if the Lord Mayor didn't need his metro buses to look like trams. He spent a bit of time talking about trams, a bit obsessed with them as well, because he knows he looks a little bit like them. He looks a little bit like them, yeah. A little bit like them, a tram in disguise. We know in the, in the contracting plan, the tender documents for the Metro vehicles, there was a specific clause which was designed to exclude Australian manufacturers by making these, basically making, making the tender documents tailor-made for Hess.
That's the LMP way.
Basically, the LMP way, of course. We know that all the issues around the failure to launch Metro or the three-and-a-half-week, you know, very auspicious, very auspicious time it had on the road.
Councillor Cassidy, come back to the report, please. It is about spare parts, not that.
Yes. Yeah, of course, yeah. So you need spare parts to, well, you don't. I guess you don't need spare parts if they're not operating anymore, do you? When you think about it. There's no more, there's no more metros on 169, unfortunately, all smoke and mirrors. But we hear the soft launch, we've, we've heard a couple of different versions of the soft launch of the Metro buses have now been pushed back. Councillor Murphy said on ABC Radio that.
Councillor Cassidy, back to the report on spare parts.
Yes. What are the spare parts for? Metro buses.
Councillor Cassidy? I'll caution you. Please stick to the report.
Yes, I'm talking about, talking about parts for Metro buses.
Councillor Massey?
I don't understand what, what the issue is.
What is the issue?
I don't know. I don't think anyone really knows, but anyway. So we know the Adelaide Street Tunnel won't be done until after mid-2025. By the time that's fully completed, it'll be late 2025. So, so the rollout and, and the deal with providing spare parts to these buses was on the proviso that they should have been, these buses should have been available for service at late 2023.
Yep.
It's now very late 2024. We have buses that are not being used, they're mothballed. So I hope there are savings in all of this. That is our hope, that these parts will not be used, because the buses will not be used. That, that is a genuine hope, but I suspect the way in which this contract will be entered into by the LMP is that Hess will be paid nonetheless. And there'll be stockpiling parts for the Metro buses that won't be used for another 12 months. Of course, the regular bus fleet, the Volgren Buses uses Volvo engines and those parts are available. Just about any heavy, heavy vehicle supplier, manufacturer here in Australia, easily accessible. Might have been a good idea, but anyway, different story for Brisbane Metro, unique product. Obviously, nothing locally made, because that's the way the Lord Mayor likes it. So the contract, of course, has to be entirely, entirely separate. I'm sure they're going to spend a fair bit of that $4 million comms budget they've just awarded to try and mop up a whole lot of this mess. And, you know, Hess has provided, it says here, some spare parts to council already. I guess the only, the only thing, they've probably got a couple of hundred kilometres on the tyres. They're not a part they're providing. I don't imagine they're going to require a whole lot of spare parts after a three-and-a-half-week foray onto the Route 169. But this whole, this whole contract, the rollout of the Metro buses, how they integrate with our bus network, would have been much simpler. Would have been much simpler if, if, if this Lord Mayor wasn't so hell-bent on a bespoke machine created basically by his regime, needing specialised parts and maintenance, specialised depots, now to the tune of $1.55 billion, which isn't even complete, nowhere near being complete, unfortunately. And this is, this is, this is the figure today, it'll change tomorrow, I'm sure. But, and this is a deal that the ratepayers of Brisbane unfortunately have to accept. They have no option, unfortunately now, because of the decisions the Lord Mayor has made and the position he has put us into. So we certainly look forward to seeing Metro buses roll out in late 2025, maybe early 2026. And some of these parts maybe, maybe being used in 2027 or 2028 or beyond.
Further speakers. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B. As the Lord Mayor said, the report has been prepared using the mid-year budget review figures in conjunction with the year-to-date approved budget. It includes statements of comprehensive income, financial position and cash flows, while comparing this year's figures with the previous year. Across council, the report demonstrates that in the first quarter of the financial year, revenue is above budget and both our capital expenditure and expenses are below budget. These results, as we know, are subject to a range of variables as the report comprehensively and transparently outlines. And expenditure is expected to materially, materially align with the annual budget at the end of the financial year. Although we are on track, Madam Chair, we are still facing challenging times as all local governments are and as the Lord Mayor referenced. And despite what they say, Brisbane City Council is not immune from those impacts. The alternative, as is seemingly the position of those opposite, Madam Chair, is to just spend, 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 spend all the while and make $3.5 billion of unfunded election commitments. They go ahead without any reference to reality. The last quarterly net borrowing report noted a small uptick in the global growth forecast, but also highlighted the ongoing risks of geopolitical tensions, impacts of the energy and the commodity markets, and services inflation remaining high. Global inflation is continuing to moderate gradually, with most countries projected to be back within the target range by the end of 2025. However, underlying inflation is not falling as quickly, and the RBA does not expect inflation to sustainably return to its 2% to 3% target until 2026. All of this affects Brisbane City Council. When your costs are going up, Madam Chair, you need to take a really close look at your expenses to ensure that you can keep costs down for residents in a cost-of-living crisis. We have respect for residents' money, and we will make the savings and be very upfront with residents while we're doing it. The report before us sets out the progress we are making with that approach. Our side of the chamber, Madam Chair, has the experience to run Australia's largest local government, and we have a proven track record of keeping expenses down for residents. But challenges remain, Madam Chair, and will continue to advocate for our fair share of funding, just as the Lord Mayor has said. Can I acknowledge the hard work of the council finance officers and their management in delivering so much for the people of Brisbane in the last financial year amidst these challenging times? The people of Brisbane, in my view, Madam Chair, can have comfort that under the leadership of the Lord Mayor, our finances will continue to be well managed, we will keep costs down for residents, and we can invest in the projects that will keep Brisbane moving. Finally, and through you, Madam Chair, I'm not in the business of winning councillor Cassidy's approval. I'm in the business of winning the approval of Brisbane residents. We have been very upfront with Brisbane residents about sensible savers, savings that need to be found, to the point where we took this to the election this year, Madam Chair, and the people of Brisbane have endorsed the LMP council team. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B and D. And just for your reference, Madam Chair, I'm particularly referring to page 16 in item B. But first, I would like to start with just a few brief comments about item D, the significant contracting plan. Here we are, the biggest project the city does, and it's an overseas supplier. As a result of council choosing to go down this route, despite the fact that our own procurement policy says we should, you know, look for local suppliers, which actually includes all of Australia, right? The, the definition of a local supplier is all of Australia. The Lord Mayor went overseas. As a result of that decision to purchase, he was doing so well today as well. He was talking about buses, but then he started talking about trams again. But as a result of that, we are now locked into a 20-year contract for the supply of items to service the buses. Now, the report provides some really interesting language. It says, we are not required to purchase spares, we can use generic spares, but I quote, "We can only use generic spares where it does not impact the warranty Hess is providing." Now, anybody with a new car knows if you put a bit from somebody else's parts in your car, you'll void your warranty. So I suspect this council's going to be in for a bit of a shock with respect to the cost of that over the years. And let's hope that there's not goodwill but a mistake and our warranty is suddenly voided because some very helpful engineering council goes and puts in a generic part into a bus. You can see where that goes. But I particularly just want to talk about item B at the moment. When revenue is up, but expenditure is down and capital expenditure is down, that is experience that the finance chair is known for, but it's not a positive thing. And if the people of Brisbane had any idea of how bad this LMP administration were as financial managers, and they're starting to find out, they wouldn't reelect you. The experience is that this LMP administration are incompetent financial managers. And that is shown in this budget report today. Not only are they incompetent financial managers, that is having a real impact on the delivery of services to the people of Brisbane. And the deputy, sorry, the opposition leader outlined that. But the biggest issue and the biggest drain on our budget is the Brisbane Metro. Now, over the past few days, there. Now, over the past few days, there have been, it's, it's doubled in its cost, it's doubled in its cost. And today, where the council's going to force through a secret amount, but a lot more money adding to the cost. But the biggest problem we've had in the last few days are the lies that have come out about the Brisbane Metro.
Councillor Johnston, I do warn you about using that terminology.
Yeah, you told me I could, thank you. Um, the lies that have been said about the Brisbane Metro.
Councillor Johnston. I have cautioned you, do not continue to ignore that instruction, please.
Yeah, last week you told me we could, so you're saying we can't now?
Councillor Johnston.
I'm sorry, I was, I asked you specifically last week, are you saying now?
I have warned you, in accordance with section 21.6 of the meeting's local law 2001, that failing to comply with my request may result in an order being issued.
He's just trying to stop me speaking. So, um, the biggest problem we've got is this LNP administration uh kept it a secret from this chamber, from the people of Brisbane and from bus users uh that the 169 launch of the metro, the commencement of the metro um was only a secret less than four-week trial.
And councillor Johnston, you heard me say earlier to councillor Cassidy that that is not in the report.
Madam Chair, I refer you to page 16, which clearly states um the operational readiness and testing for Route 169, eight mile planes, with services commencing in October 24.
Do not speak over the top of me.
Are you making a ruling that I can't speak about what's in the report?
Yep.
It's in the report and if you're wasting my time, that is, this is a protect-
Councillor Johnston, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes before this meeting. And I have asked you to please stick to the report. Councillor.
Dissent, we're doing dissent. We'll just.
Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just confirm to me what that order for inappropriate conduct was for?
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
Madam Chair, point of order, you called me and I asked you, could you please tell me what that inappropriate conduct order was for?
Councillor Johnston, I made a ruling.
Yes, what was it?
My ruling is that you did not follow what I had asked you to do. That is my instruction that you ignored. Further speakers?
Okay, point of, point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I move uh that you have engaged in inappropriate behaviour um by uh refusing to allow myself and councillor Cassidy to, to speak to uh page 16 of the E and C report before us today.
Seconded.
So, I, is that a dissent? It has been moved by councillor Johnston that I am showing, is that what you're saying? Unsuitable meeting conduct is seconded by councillor Cassidy. All those in favour say aye? Oh, one moment. Councillors, I will now vacate the chair during the debate.
Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise on this motion of inappropriate conduct by the Chair of Council um because of her deliberate acts today to prevent councillors from speaking to item B, the operational plan, progress and quarterly financial report uh for the period ending September 2024. Now, that report, which is contained in our council papers today, um contains numerous mentions of the Metro and it specifically contains the following provisions on page 16, and I'm quoting from page 16. Continued delivery of Brisbane's new bus network and council's operational readiness programme, including operational readiness activities and testing for Route 169, eight mile planes to UQ Lakes, with services commencing in October 2024. Now, that is one of numerous mentions in the reports in both item B and item D before us today. Now, I specifically referenced the page number in the E and C report when I stood up to speak earlier today. The Chair of Council inappropriately uh uh made an inappropriate order against councillor Cassidy and also against myself for speaking to an item that is clearly in the establishment and coordination report. She has done so as a form of censorship and protectionist policy for the LNP who have botched um the Metro programme rollout. Now, it is in this report before us today, it's not mentioned as a trial here either and two weeks ago in this place it wasn't mentioned as a trial. It's mentioned that the services are commencing, in black and white, in writing, in this report. For the Chair of Council to stand up and say councillors cannot debate and discuss matters that are actually in the E and C report um is inappropriate conduct by her. Um, the LNP councillors will no doubt vote to protect her appallingly bad chairing of the meetings, protect her biased decision-making, protect her inappropriate conduct, protect her incompetent chairing of the meetings and protect her failure to recognise, as she says, it's a chamber, it's a robust place for discussion, and not if you say something the LNP don't like. Not if you're debating what's in the E and C report but they don't want you to talk about, then the LNP will use their numbers, use their proxy, the Chair of Council, who is so biased. I didn't think anybody could be worse than Angela Owen, but she is by a long way, because you cannot even speak about what is in a report. Now, the Chair of Council has an obligation under the City of Brisbane Act to act fairly. She has an obligation under the meeting's local law to allow debate about the items in the report. It is a specific uh requirement in the meeting's local law. When you quote the page from which you are speaking, when you outline what it is you are speaking about and the Chair of Council makes um, makes a decision that you have engaged in inappropriate conduct because she has engaged in appallingly biased behaviour, appallingly uh disrespectful behaviour to other councillors, um then that's just not on. The only thing we can do is debate what's in these reports. I don't have the power to speak around the world, I've got five minutes to speak because of the changes the LNP forced. But the Chair of Council today has deliberately stopped councillors from speaking about the report itself, what is in the report, in black and white, and that is just wrong. It is a breach of her obligations under the Act and the meeting's local law and the LNP um know it and it is wrong. And I am not going to sit back and take her inappropriate behaviour um with respect to our ability to debate what is in a report before us today. Um, because it's in there on page 16 in black and white, as well as numerous references to the Metro in item B and a whole report on item D about the running of the Metro and the parts to supply it. Yet this chair, in a biased protection racket for the LNP, tries to stop people speaking about what is actually in the reports. That is the very definition of inappropriate conduct and I would say it's misconduct because she has failed to check what is in the reports herself and simply put a ban on anybody who disagrees with the LNP. That is a misuse of her power.
Any further speaker? Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr Deputy Chair. Uh, we've now had the impassioned derogatory, defamatory and straight-out rude speech from the councillor for Tennyson. Um, all I would say is just because you do not like a chair's ruling does not make them wrong. And if anyone is arguing about not listening to what people are saying and being censored, it is councillor Landers who was attacked and bullied and yelled at, week in, week out, because they don't like her rulings, not that they're wrong, because they don't like them. And this comes from the woman who sat in that chair for one meeting and couldn't control herself without telling a councillor to F off. I move that this motion be put.
Seconded.
Uh, it is moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon, as it is a procedural mo- mo- motion. Uh, all those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those who can say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
You, division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Chonghua. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and six against.
The motion has carried. Councillor Johnston, you have five minutes to offer, um, of reply. Councillors, please return to your seat. Councillor Johnston.
Um, yet again, um, the deputy mayor in this place has exposed her behaviour to everybody in Brisbane. She she has stood up and instead of allowing a debate as the legislation and the meeting's local law intended regarding the behaviour of the chair and chairing the meetings, um, she made some outrageously rude comments. Um, well, thank you councillor Cunningham. In fact, they weren't true, um, because I was the deputy chair of council for
Yeah, point of order councillor Whire. Um, councillor Johnston's has a real nasty habit of attributing
Councillor Whines, it is not point of order.
I'm seeking a ruling, thanks councillor Collier. Uh, councillor Johnson has a real nasty habit of accusing councillors on this side of saying things when they
Councillor, councillor Whines, it is not a point of order. Councillor Whines.
The other week she did it to me three times when I didn't speak. Today, today, um councillor Cunningham.
Councillor Whines, please resume your seat. Councillor Johnston. Councillors, councillor Johnston have the floor.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, councillor Whines continued to shout over you as you were trying to speak. You have precedents as Chair, will you be taking any remedial action against councillor Whines?
I've shut his microphone. Councillor Johnston.
We're in this, just to be clear, we're in this situation today um because the Chair of Council stopped councillors from discussing a matter that is in black and white in the E and C report before us today. And again, I will read out what is in item B. It says, continued delivery of the Brisbane's new bus network and council's operation readiness programme, including operational readiness activities and testing for Route 169, eight mile planes to UQ Lakes, with services commencing in October 2024. It is one of probably a dozen references to the Metro in item B and item D is all about the delivery and ongoing readiness of the Metro project. But today, the Chair of Council has been uh biased and uh prevented opposition councillors from discussing the items that are clearly in writing in the E and C report. It's not an interpretation of the E and C report, it's what's in item B. Um, and councillor Cassidy was inappropriate behaved, I was inappropriate behaved, um, all because this Chair of Council is running a protection racket for the LNP. We know that councillor Murphy has botched this. He's botched it so badly that the Lord Mayor has to come in here and say how great the Metro is. There is no Metro, it's not running. Despite the fact that in the report before us today, it says the Metro has commenced. But instead of us having a debate as the legislation and the meeting's local law intends with respect to the behaviour of the Chair of Council, the deputy mayor has come in here, she's used her massive majority and the regime has said, we can't even debate her actions. Now, she is wrong, she was wrong. She has made a decision that is contrary to the meeting's local laws rules, um, that is clearly, um, her behaviour is not supported by the actual council papers before us today. And instead of allowing councillor Cassidy to speak, as he was directly impacted um in what he could say in E and C, um, the Chair of Council uh has used her power uh to make inappropriate conduct um notations about me and councillor Cassidy. Councillor Landers was wrong. She has abused her powers, which are significant in this place, to benefit the LNP councillors by preventing debate about a serious issue that is within the council papers before us today. By doing that, she is seeking to reduce scrutiny about the single biggest project that Brisbane City Council
Point of order.
Um, I believe that there is uh imputing motive, at least some defamatory comments being made about councillor Landers, that it's very, and we have no privilege in this place.
Yeah, yes, I, I remind councillors, there's no privilege in this council. And yes, I agree that some of the comments are inappropriate, so please refrain from doing that. Councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, thank you councillor Collier, the best defence is the truth. And the truth here is um that the information that I've been trying to discuss, councillor Cassidy's been discussed, is on page 16 of the quarterly financial report. Um, there's, there's really not much else that needs to be said. The Chair of Council clearly was wrong. She has tried to restrict debate um to protect the LNP from adverse comments about a project that they have massively botched, that they have lied about, that they have been publicly dishonest about um in this place and uh in the media. And her behaviour today is inappropriate conduct because she has failed to follow the rules under the City of Brisbane Act and under the meeting's local law, which specifically allow councillors to debate items in the reports before us. I urge all councillors to vote for the motion.
Now I put the, the vote on the unsuitable meeting conduct motion. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those who can say no?
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Although, um, those in favour say, oh, sorry, uh, yes to my right, no to my left. Yeah, thank you. Please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
The motion is lost. And before I invite the Chair back to the seat, I would like to remind all councillors, please refer to other councillors by their title. In the past speech, there's a lot of mention that did not call by the correct title. Now can someone advise Chair to be back to the chamber? Yep. And Chair, council has decided that you have now engaged in unsuitable meeting contact. Please come back to the Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. And I congratulate you on your exoneration and welcome you back to the Chair. And that was a very sad display, a sad rant from councillor Johnston, wasn't it councillors?
Councillor Murphy, please come back to the report now.
I will, Madam Chair. Item D on the E and C, the significant contracting plan for OEM spare parts and maintenance support for the metro. Obviously, Madam Chair, for the last month, we've had metros operating on the route 169. And it's given us a glimpse...
One moment councillors, councillor Murphy, just one moment please. Please take your seat. I hope for the final time that I am advising councillors to not call out while other councillors on their feet. And also, to please stick to the report that we are talking about. So councillor Murphy, on the report please.
Well, as I was about to say, Madam Chair, ahead of full operations commencing, we need to make sure that we have an arrangement in place to source spare parts. Now, as the Lord Mayor said, this is something that we already have in place for the rest of our bus fleet. Our existing parts supplier requirements are primarily fulfilled through supply contracts with manufacturers like Volgrin, Volvo and MAN. And it's very important that we maintain our high-quality parts that are designed specifically for the vehicle model so that the work that we do on our buses is safe and effective. With the addition of metro buses into our fleet, it's critical that we have a similar arrangement in place with our supplier Hess to make sure our fleet remains safe and operational. Of course, the metro fleet is fully electric, Chair. And generally speaking, the servicing requirements of these electric vehicles are lower than that of our diesel fleet. And this is very true. Now, councillors may not be aware of this, but we spend around $27,000 per annum on spare parts per bus in our bus fleet. Now, this varies slightly for every vehicle, based on the model, the age, the fuel type. And all of that sort of plays a part in terms of determining the maintenance cost. But the spend for parts on our metro vehicles, we anticipate to be approximately $21,000 per year. So significantly less than a diesel or a gas bus while carrying...
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, the information about the cost of parts for the metro is commercial in confidence in the papers before us today. We've been told not to discuss funding. But now the relevant chairperson has released that information, which is easily discernible now as a per-bus cost. So what action are you going to take against the Chair for revealing commercial in confidence information?
I haven't heard any numbers mentioned councillor. Councillor, no, I don't uphold your point of order. And, but I will say and warn all speakers on this, that it is commercial in confidence. Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks Madam Chair. And councillors will note that this is not in the report and that this is not commercial in confidence information. I've given an average spend on spare parts per bus.
Councillors?
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Massey.
Could I just seek a ruling? Councillor Murphy, through you, just admitted that the information that he's talking about is not in the report.
Councillor, thank you, and I have made my ruling. Councillors?
Yes councillor...
Thank you councillors.
I know councillor Massey, you're new to this place, but you have to be relevant to the report. You don't have to read the report or speak only on things that are in the report. You have to be relevant to the report now.
Councillor Murphy, come back to the report please.
Now, keep in mind that although there is a lower spare parts cost for our metros, they carry significantly more passengers and they run more frequently than our regular buses. So this is a great outcome for ratepayers. Now, we heard some absolute porkies in the debate as we went through. In particular, in rebutting Chair, councillor Cassidy mentioned the business case that was tabled in respect of the 169 earlier. Now, he mentioned that, he mentioned that the business case proved that he was right and that the 169 had no end date. Well, it actually, as usual, what councillor Cassidy says is not true. I'm coming back to the debate on this item, which councillor Cassidy said.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, he said, he said, he said that the report proved...
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
You just made a ruling that I wasn't allowed to talk about previous debate and councillor Murphy continues to defy your ruling. So I think that's inappropriate meeting conduct.
Yep, I've just asked councillor Murphy to come back to the report please.
Well, I'm coming back to the report, Madam Chair, because this is an SCP for spare parts. And we had, I remember, an SCP very similar to this, where we were talking about purchasing for metro tyres. And councillor Cassidy couldn't understand why we were purchasing so many tyres for the metro. He didn't understand, even though he constantly talks.
Councillor Murphy?
Relevance. Relevance. It's not in the report.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Councillor Murphy, please come back to the report.
Madam Chair, I'm being as relevant to the report as they were in their debate. Otherwise, how would I be able to debate them if I cannot talk to the things that they said in their own report? And I know when they're being loud, Madam Chair, they want to silence me.
Councillor Murphy, I'll ask you to sit down if you are not going to come back to the report.
That is inappropriate meeting conduct.
Thank you councillor, and I do caution.
You have to know, you have to do that.
Correct. Thank you councillor Cassidy, I am cautioning you councillor Murphy. I've asked you to come back to the report, please do. If you've got nothing further to say about items B and D, then please resume your seat.
Madam Chair, is it your ruling that I can't talk about the things that they talked about in their own debate on this report?
Councillor, councillor Murphy, I'm sure that when the Lord Mayor sums up, he will be able to do that. Thank you councillor Johnston. Further speakers, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much Chair, and I rise today to talk about item B, the annual operational plan progress and quarterly financial report for the period ending in September 2024. And what we are, of course, looking at here today is a document that highlights all of the wrong priorities of this LNP regime and how they affect every single suburb right across Brisbane with their cuts and their choices. Earlier this year, when the Lord Mayor and his LNP team emphatically endorsed the budget, those on the administration side of the chamber were happy. They were happy with the piddences for their local communities. And on this side of the chamber, of course, we are always on the side of local residents and we will always stand with them to get a better deal for every single suburb of Brisbane. And this report does not deliver that. This report and the progress, I have no doubt, will be signed off on by every single LNP councillor. And, yes, except for councillor Murphy, who has decidedly...
Thank you councillor, stick to the report.
Sorry. I have no doubt that every single LNP councillor, except councillor Murphy, will sign off on this. And for clarity, this is what every single LNP councillor is saying that they are okay with for their communities. Less suburban drainage, less spent on active transport, less spent on park and tree maintenance, less on potholes, less on suburban streets being repaired, less on local road projects. And as we've learnt over the last few days, savage cuts to suburban libraries across Brisbane's communities. In what universe are these LNP councillors, who are elected to serve their communities, okay with what is in this report today? At the end of the day, we have had so many countless examples of the financial mismanagement of Brisbane by this LNP regime. And they are all highlighted throughout the quarterly financial reports and the progress on the annual operation plan. We have seen every single major project under this LNP regime blow out by absolutely epic proportions. And at the same time, they are happy to spend millions and millions and millions on fancy stuff. Fancy first-class trips to Paris for politicians, fancy glossy brochures with the Lord Mayor's smiling face on it, stuffed into every single letterbox of every resident in Brisbane every other week. Expensive parties for a metro that failed to launch. How on earth can the LNP say that this is okay? How can any LNP politician, on one hand, make excuses for why they can't get money from their council for, say, a dangerous intersection to be fixed? Or why they can't get that suburban drainage that their community's been desperately asking for? And then on the other hand, be absolutely fine and endorse all of this excess and fancy stuff that the LNP are so in love with? They are absolutely addicted, Chair, to the PR outcome and not a real forward-thinking vision of what Brisbane should be moving towards in the future. That's what's lacking in these reports. And we, of course, know in the last 24 hours alone what the, just what a disaster the LNP has been when it comes to delivering their flagship metro project. It, of course, as demonstrated in this report on page fourteen under Programme One Transport for Brisbane, we know that it's blown out by hundreds of millions of dollars as of today. And now we find out, of course, that it hasn't really even started. There is form here, I think it's just another one of councillor Murphy's furfies. And for those of you who don't know what a furphy is, it is a...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, Deputy Mayor, one moment please councillor Collier, point of order Deputy Mayor.
Relevance to the report, councillor Murphy is not in the report.
He's not even here.
No!
They can't have it both ways, Madam Chair.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and councillor Collier, please come back to the report.
Yep, so on page sixteen, under the heading Brisbane Metro, when we talk about testing and readiness activities for route 169, I have an important document here actually that I'd like to table. Oh, not this one, this one. We have failed, that is what councillor Murphy said. And I often don't find myself agreeing with councillor Murphy, but I thought I would call you...
Councillor Collier, your time has expired. Further, further speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you Chair, I rise to speak on the B quarterly financial report. Under this council, no funding of public services will be left unscathed. This is the LNP administration that cut $400 million in council spending in the middle of a budget year. The same LNP administration that's having a fire sale of public land and green spaces and championing plans to privatise a chunk of Mount Coop Reserve. And of course, this is the same LNP administration that raises the bill on rates payers while giving handouts to wealthy developers. That's the infamous budget management of LNP administration. The newest victim, young children and families. The Shrinna Council has quietly decided to slash the First Five Forever programme in our local libraries.
Point of order.
In this quarterly financial report...
Yeah, point of order.
First Five Forever is not in any of the reports here today.
Yeah, councillor Chongwa, please come back to her report.
I speak on Programme Five. In this quarterly financial report and the most recent council budget, there is no transparency and virtually no budget information on major programmes. In previous budgets, the First Five Forever programme was individually costed. This council is now hiding its financial information from councils and the public.
Point of order.
You are not relevant to the report when you talk about what's not in it. Can you ask her to come back to the report please?
Councillor Chongwa, please.
I'm speaking to Programme Five and about budget cuts. First Five Forever is a story and rhyme time for babies, toddlers and kids under five. It gives these kids a place to play, learn and sing with other children at a time when child's brain is developing a million connections a second. For parents, this is a place to borrow books or toys, share stories, and most importantly, connect with other young families when they're at their most isolated. These programmes are so popular, and even now, parents struggle to find a spot. But this week, we've learned that, from devastated librarians, that around a quarter of all rhyme time has been cut by this LNP council. The Paddington Ward has no public library. But under this change, Mayor Shrinna has cut all weekly First Five Forever sessions from Mount Coop to library. All children's sessions and half the baby sessions from the Brisbane Square and half the toddler sessions from Towong Library. LNP budgeting means more parents, children and babies will lose access to this valuable programme. My Greens colleague, Michael Boettman, has started a petition to reverse this decision.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, point of order.
Relevance to the report, Boettman is definitely not in this report.
Yes councillor Chongwa, I ask you to, I ask you to come back to the report.
With most funding coming... Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
To quote councillor Cassidy, "The pre-prepared speech is no longer relevant."
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Is it your ruling, Mr Deputy Chair, that if another politician representing another level of government is not noted within a report, that they cannot be mentioned?
Well, it is about the report itself, so if the name is not mentioned, then it is...
If the name is not mentioned in the report, that's, that's the rule now. Okay, that's a good one, I like that. That won't last the rest of the day, I don't reckon.
Please, all speakers, stick to the report, councillor Chongwa.
With most funding coming from the state government, the Shrinna Council had budgeted this programme from through to 2026. So why have they pulled this shady move and blindsided young families? No announcements, no transparency, transparency? How can we have trust in this quarterly financial report? We have no, no, there is no financial transparency by this LNP council. Our mayor knows no bounds when it comes to cutting public services. I see in this quarterly financial report that developer fees are continuing to be lower than budgeted for. This is a political decision to cut funding for your young families to cover Shrinna's discounts for rich developers. This is an austerity budget...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, point of order.
I think we just heard a ruling from the Chair that you must call councillors by their name, thank you.
Yes, councillor Chongwa, please call the council by the appropriate title.
Thanks, sorry Chair, thanks. This is an austerity budget by stealth, and young families are this week's victims. This is an austerity budget by stealth, and young families are this week's victims. The precedent set by our Lord Mayor Shrinna is that even if a programme funded by the state government is listed in the annual budget, it can be cut mid-year. In respect of this quarterly financial budget, no funding is set in stone when there is under a LNP government. Cutting story and rhyme times for babies, toddlers and children is just one more tally on the board of a council lacking principle and honesty.
Any further speaker? Councillor Strong.
Yes, I thought maybe there would be another speaker from the other side, but obviously they're mute. Okay, I'm speaking to Clause B, and initially about the financial results. And the first thing that was interesting going through them that was interesting to me was that the, that the, that the report states that the revenue is higher than anticipated due to the transport revenue. And, sorry? Okay. And I thought that was quite interesting. I wonder what caused that, that the revenue was higher due to the anticipated, that was higher than anticipated, and I wonder what that was. And then I thought, well, of course, transport, the revenue was higher in transport, of course, because of the 50-cent fares. Thank you to the former Miles government. And, of course, the current state government that's actually going along with that terrific programme as well. Yes, for now. I take that interjection. Mr. Deputy Chair, expenses, the employee expenses or costs were actually lower. And I think, of course, the opposition leader, councillor Cassidy, mentioned this. But I was just thinking that maybe some of that savings could be actually used with the negotiations for the EBA. Because sadly, I think the suggestion is that the employees would only get a 3% increase. And, of course, councillors, we got a 4% increase, so maybe we should be a bit fair. We do have some history on this side of the chamber about being fair and equitable when it comes to council employees, as, you know, in conjunction with what we actually receive as well. Now, moving on to the revenue for developer contributions. Now, this quarter, it showed that there was $11.5 million. Well, guess what it was last year for this quarter, first quarter last year? $23.7 million, more than double. That's a bit telling. I wonder if there, there must be a lot of discounting going on or something. That's all I can say. And if you look at the overall budget, actually, for this year and then last year, developer contributions were going to be down $50 million. That's a lot of dough. That's a lot of curb and channeling. That's a lot of footpaths. That's a lot of everything. Now, the overall, there are 310 resurfacing, roads resurfacing listed in the schedule. And this particular quarter, we've only achieved 64. It should have been, it should have been about 77, which, so we're basically about 20% behind where we should be in the first quarter. So I think, you know, by the time we get to the third and fourth quarter, I wonder how far behind we'll actually be. Wonder if we'll achieve anywhere near that 310 road resurfacing that was, that was announced in the, in the budget. Now, the, here's one for councillor Wines, and that was that it was listed in the, in the report, of course, that the, one of the intersections that were delivered or about to be delivered or about turned on is the Woolaray intersection. And I did ask councillor Wines in the committee as to when that would happen, and he says he would come back to me. So maybe he would like to let us know that tonight so that we can put it in the diary. Because I'm sure the, I'm sure the member for Oxley would love to know that as well. Now, moving on to Programme Five, right? While looking at the various budgets, the standout is the, is the capital expenditure for the first quarter, which council has, has only spent 5% in the first quarter. I mean, that's just, that's just amazing, right? How little they've actually spent in that first quarter. Now, maybe the, maybe someone from the other side, maybe in summing up, they can tell us why they have only achieved 5%. But I think that's really embarrassing, you know? What's it going to be, what's it going to be in the next quarter, you know? Are they going to only spend 10 or 15%? Or maybe 20? Who knows? So in going over the financials.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Messi?
Thank you, Chair. I rise briefly to speak on item B, just to put a couple of comments on the record. And I think it's very important to reiterate with this quarterly report that we've received that revenues are up, expenses are low, expenditure is low. But what we are seeing across not only the papers in front of us, but in real time across our city in the delivery of programme and projects are cuts. We know that these cuts are happening. There's been lots of conversation today about it, not just the First Forever, not just the metro buses that are not running anymore. We're talking about sewerage, we're talking about drainage, we're talking about creative spaces, right? But again, reiterating that expenses are below and capital expenditure is low. A concerning thing that I thought I saw in the expenses is the lower employee costs, right? Remembering that it wasn't long ago, when we talked about the budget cuts, that we talked about what would happen, less employees, cuts to short-term employees, rollover of projects into the year later, rollover of other projects, the cutting of other projects, the continual cycle. And now here today, and I, and I just want to say this really briefly because this is just my point, we are seeing and hearing the exact same messages that we heard last November, right? We're hearing the exact same messages from last November. And maybe this time, it won't be palatable for the LNP administration to do a 10% cut, but we are hearing the same information. And if it is not palatable that we'll get to that $400 million cut, what I am concerned about, as we read through this document, is the continual delay of projects across all the programmes, the continual stopping of projects across all the programmes, and the continual hiding of the fact that that's happening. At least today, we have been able to hear a little transparency. We heard that the First Five Forever was a Brisbane City Council cut. We have, you know, here on page 16, it literally says the operational 169. That is now not operating. So, look, that's all I want to say. We've been talking about this for a while. The spiral seems to be continuing. I'm hoping it's not, and I'm hoping that we don't see those huge cuts to the budget sooner rather than later in an amendment of the budget that should be coming soon. Nonetheless, I am, I am undeniably concerned. And I'm really concerned because we're hearing the same wording that we heard before last November. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speaker? Well, since there's no further speaker, now I put Clause B of the E and C report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those who can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 7 against.
The motion has passed. Please return to your seat. Now I put the Clause D of E and C report to the vote.
Point of order, Chair.
Sorry, point of order.
Yes, could you tell us how much time is left in the three-hour rule for E and C and the committee reports? How much time is left?
10 minutes.
Sorry?
10 minutes.
Thank you.
Now I put Clause D of the E and C report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those who can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by the deputy mayor, oh, sorry, councillor Edelman. Those, yes, to my right, noes to my left. Please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 7 against and 6 abstentions.
The report is, the item is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Yep. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November, 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It is moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Edelman, that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 12th of November, 2024, be adopted. Is there any, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, we didn't turn that off, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Business hub workshops first, what's on this week to share with your business communities? We have the Future Proof Your Business with an AI Success Strategy, which is from social mediology around key strategies for integrating AI solutions effectively. That's on the 21st at 9:30 to 11:30. And also on that day, 1:30 to 3:30, which I think is Thursday, if I have it right, is Unlock True Productivity by Aligning Tasks with Purpose. So this workshop is about transformative approach showing how to cultivate habits that support a fulfilling, focused and successful life, and that is by the Nadana Collective. So it's great to see that we're still getting a lot of variety in our workshops. And again, I encourage all of you to make sure you share that with your business communities. Last week, we had the fifth report that has come to council on the feedback from the Paris learnings. And this time, it was from the manager of Strategy and Governance in the host city office and the general manager of Transport Planning Operations on the Paralympic learnings as well as transport and accessibility. And that is the valuable driver that we see here with our opportunity in 2032, and that is inclusion. There is no better opportunity than the Paralympic Games to promote inclusion, drive meaningful legacy outcomes that will make Brisbane even better for everyone. So we know that there's over 4.3 million Australians living with a disability, but only one in four participate in sport. So as the Lord Mayor said earlier today, there is a lot of opportunities and we love our sport and we do actually participate very well, but it's always not that easy for those with a disability as well. And I think improving that sporting participation for our residents, particularly extending those to people living with a disability and drive those legacy outcomes will be fantastic for our better inclusion, diversity and accessibility. And so what we heard from the two managers that came back, spoke to us last week, was how Paris used the Games to increase awareness and access to Parisports. They had a multi-year programme involving disability organisations and Parisporting groups. They hosted testing events, they had Parisports showcases, highly impactful marketing campaigns to build excitement and raise awareness for the Paralympics, which are just as big in the participation of the community and the visitors to the city as the Olympics, even if it isn't as big as the participation when it comes to the actual athletes in the event itself. So we've already taken a leaf out of their book last year with our first Parisports Day, bringing together Paralympians and community members to enjoy a day of fully inclusive and all-abilities events, and we look forward to expanding those, as Paris has done as well, to see how they actually leverage those Parisports and community days. But they're just part of some of the events we're going to be able to have over the next generation of sports stars. It is scary to learn that most people that will, the majority of people that compete in the Olympics in 2030, in the Paralympics in 2032, may not already have their disability yet. I had the great opportunity to speak with the vice president of the Paralympic Committee when I was in Paris, Dwayne Cale, who is a New Zealand swimmer. He did not get his disability to age of 22. He was a very active sports person that ended up with a tumour on his spine that paralysed him from the waist down. He got into swimming and within five years was a Paralympic swimmer, winning many gold, silver and bronze over the next two Paralympics that he went to. He is an absolute inspiration, but it was really interesting to spend that time with him as a sports person and moving around Paris to see how it wasn't that easy to get around. And that was not even talking about the ramps and the access that we already have here already, but the little things like the cobblestones or the steps that may only be 100mm high, but that makes a huge difference when you're in a wheelchair as well. So we need to make sure that we do all of the work that we can to improve the physical accessibility of our city. We saw a lot of things that Paris did well, we saw a lot of things that they didn't do well, but they did the best that they can on their beautiful heritage streets as well. Accessible tourism will be a big focus for us, and particularly as the Accessible Tourism Year was last year, we're doing a lot in our destination planning for that. We also looked at transport last week. I'm very concerned I've only got 30 seconds left, but we talked about metro stations and expansion, and we also talked about the urban renewal opportunities. The Lord Mayor mentioned Saint Denis, where they had the Stade de France, but also the Athletes' Village as well, and how transforming industrial land on the outskirts of Paris to create new homes, parklands, schools and facilities. And I think we have that opportunity in North Shore Hamilton as well. There is still too much to talk about, but it is all being written down and recorded. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair.
Further debate, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Rise to speak on the report, the committee presentation, the learnings from Paris. And this, this was the second half of the reports from the Paris Olympic and Paralympic Games we were receiving in the committee. And this one also, as the deputy mayor said, touched on some of those elements specific to the Paralympic Games and fully accessible stadiums and public spaces as well. And one of, one of the things that, which I'll come to shortly, I want to start with around housing and housing outcomes, as was discussed in the report. There's a significant cause for concern about the housing impact that the Olympic Games in 2024 had in the city of Paris. Even looking at the moment at the lower estimates, it's really concerning. The French government bust French homeless people out of the city of Paris ahead of the Olympics. Reportedly, 5,000 homeless people were bussed away into regional towns. Data also showed that rental evictions rose 41% from the period of April 23 to September 24 compared to the same period two years prior. So some pretty bad housing outcomes when it comes to, to the city of Paris. Q Shelter noted have launched an SEQ Housing Monitoring and Displacement Report alongside the Australian Housing and Urban Research Institute, of which is a body of work that will review the entire housing system every single year in the lead-up to the. in the lead-up to the Brisbane 2032 Olympic Games. And housing displacement at every level needs to be in a legacy plan, in councils' legacy planning, in the state government's legacy planning, and in the federal government's legacy planning as well. The Athletes' Village in Paris, so there were those negatives, obviously, there were some positives in that a high percentage of that Athletes' Village was reserved for social and affordable housing. A very high percentage, I think 30 or 40%, here in Brisbane, it's determined to only be 5%. A massive failure on the previous state government's planning and on the current state government's planning, and we certainly hope that is addressed. In terms of transport, what we were told is that Brisbane is really only about 50% of the way to delivering the transport needed for the Games themselves and also beyond. The Brisbane Race to Gold document that the LMP have produced doesn't go close to addressing these issues. They just sort of talk about things that are currently being talked about and currently in the pipeline. But if we just stick to that business-as-usual approach that the LMP presented.
Sorry. Under the provisions of Section 3513 of the meeting's local law, on the expiration of the period, allow for debate of committee reports. I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Transport Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Infrastructure Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. And now I'll put the motion for the adoption of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
All those that can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Second.
Division. Yep, division called by Deputy Mayor and seconded by Council Edelman for, for the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report. All those in favour, oh sorry, yes, to my right, no, to my left, please ring the bell. Clug, please read the result.
Mister Deputy Chair, the eyes have it, the voting being 22 in favour and three abstentions.
The report's been carried. Please return to your seats. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the City Standards Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Community and the Arts Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. I will now put the motion for the adoption of the Finance and City Governance Committee Report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those that can say no? The ayes have it. Councilors, are there any petitions? Councils, are there, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or Councilor Ethics Committee Order? Are there any matters of general business? Council Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak briefly on the, on council support for literacy programmes. There's been a lot of debate today about councils' failure to support the very important library programmes that are aimed at literacy for young people. And it is incredibly disappointing what's happened. So I just want to put a few facts on the record as they're known today. In, council has been running these wonderful literacy library programmes, Babies Books and Rhymes, First Buy Forever and, and lots of others, the whole time that I've been at council for 16 years. Not once have we ever heard the Chair of Council or the Lord Mayor or the Deputy Mayor responsible for these areas say to us that there had been budget cuts that were impacting on the sustainability of the programme. Not once. Five years ago, it turns out, in 2019, the state government reduced the allocation to council from $1 million, and we don't know whether this is, that part's true, but it was to $700 and something thousand dollars, which we do know is true because that's come out today. That's five years ago. At no point, at no point did this administration publicly say, this is a problem, we need to fix it. At no point did they say to councillors, this threatens the viability of our literacy programmes in councils' public libraries. At no point did councillor Howard, who has been the Chair that whole five years, mention there was a problem. Did the Finance Chair, who is in charge of the finances of Brisbane, mention there was a problem? No, she didn't, nor did her predecessors. So for the last five years, council has been running these programmes, but this year, five years later, in secret, has announced, well, they didn't announce it, they sent out a very vague memo to councillors, sort of saying there'd be X number of literacy sessions offered, which clearly is LNP code for a cut. Did the LNP at any point publicly say, there is a problem with funding for this programme? No. Did they do it in the budget? No. Did they do it in the information sessions? No. Have they done it in the budget review? No. All they have done is cut these important literacy programmes. Now, here are the other facts before us today. The LNP administration is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on junkets for the Lord Mayor, for the Deputy Mayor, for councillor Howard and for multiple council offices. They have made the decision that their Olympics junkets, their overseas junkets, costing ratepayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, are more important than literacy programmes for young people in our city. That is a shameful position to take, but that is the position that they have argued in this chamber over the past year. And we know today very clearly to be their position, that they would prefer to fund their overseas junkets than fund literacy programmes in Brisbane. We also know that this LNP administration will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on faux launches of their major projects, including $147,000 for what we were told in the chamber, in the memos, was the launch of the Brisbane Metro. Not that it would be a trial for three and a half weeks, that it was the launch of the Metro. And unfortunately, the cost of this expenditure is, comes at the expense of literacy programmes for young people. So does the $90,000 spent on the Breakfast Creek Bridge launch, and I'm sure a very similar amount that councillor Murphy has planned for the Kangaroo Point Bridge launch. I'm clearly on the record today saying this LNP administration have lost their way if they think their junkets and parties are more important than funding literacy programmes in councils' libraries. They are out of touch and have neglected and abandoned the Brisbane community.
Council Johnston, your time has expired. Any further general business? Council Chonghua.
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking on the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry, which was raised in these chambers as a motion from the Council Labor Party last week. Due to the local law amendments that the LNP administration forced through, our ability to have robust debate has been drastically compromised, and the ability for anyone to speak on the motion was completely lost. So I'm speaking on it now. I witnessed an historical event in September, the ceremonial hearing of the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry in Meandgin, Brisbane. The event was the beginning of a three-year process to capture and understand the effects of colonisation on First Nations peoples. That day, I spoke to many First Nations people who felt a depth of relief that something was finally happening, that there was genuine step towards healing. Now, the LNP state government's decision to abolish the state's Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry and repeal its Path to Treaty Act is a huge step backwards for First Nations people's rights. To silence our First Nations people is extremely disrespectful. To silence our elders' lived experience of pain and suffering is extremely disrespectful. To ignore the cause of transgenerational trauma is extremely disrespectful. We are living on stolen land and sovereignty has never been ceded. We are living on land where more than 400 massacres of First Nations people took place between 1780 and 1930, when they were executed by colonial forces in acting genocide. Unthinkable violence was perpetrated. Our dark history of the stolen generation, where thousands of children were violently and forcibly removed to be raised in institutions and fostered out or adopted by non-indigenous families, needs to be told through the lived experience of our First Nations peoples. The act of forcible removal of children severed the important culture, cultural, spiritual, language and family connections, which has left intergenerational trauma impacts on the lives and wellbeing of our First Nations peoples. Our First Nations peoples deserve to be heard. First Nations children are still being forcibly separated from their culture and way of life. The recommendations from the 1991 Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody have still not been fully implemented. Shamefully, there have been 580 deaths in custody since the Royal Commission. Our society is built on colonial supremacy ideology, where governments, governments have set the backdrop of the ongoing struggle, oppression, discrimination and brutality faced by First Nations people. Yet, the incoming LNP state government already intends to turn a blind eye. The cancelling of this inquiry by the LNP state government is pure racism. Then to witness last week this LNP council following along the same lines is also so shameful. I see this as a continuation or an extension of systemic racism, where we ignore our elders, our aunties, our uncles' right to truth telling and healing. I will not remain in bystander mode. This needs to be called out. This decision to silence First Nations people is extremely damaging, painful and harmful. Let's recognise the more than 65,000 years of world's longest living culture. Truth telling is crucial to the healing of our country and a pathway forward for treaty. To allow our elders, though respect, to convey their lived experiences of the brutal impact of colonial legislation and how their families and communities have suffered ongoing trauma is critical to healing. Truth telling is our healing in order to foster unity, a deeper understanding of respect, dignity and wellbeing for all of us, especially our First Nations peoples. We truly cannot move forward without Australians acknowledging the evidence and horror of our dark history and current systemic racism against our First Nations people.
Any further general business? It says no further general business. Councils, I draw your attention to the, sorry. Yep. Yeah. So councils, I draw your attention to the notice of motion, item eight on the agenda. Council Strunk, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move that the Brisbane City Council submits a proposal for funding to the federal government's housing support programme to deliver much-needed water and sewage infrastructure for the Ellen Grove acreage area that will unlock potentially thousands of residential dwellings to be built.
Seconded.
It's moved by Council Strunk, seconded by Council Cassidy, that Brisbane City Council submits a proposal for funding to the federal government housing support programme to deliver much-needed water and sewage infrastructure for the Ellen Grove acreage area, which will unlock the potential for thousands more residential dwellings to be built. Is there any, Council Strunk?
Sorry, it's on? Okay. Thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I rise to, I rise to this motion, I want to speak to this motion, I should say, because it's, the Ellen Grove acreage area is probably one of the last greenfield-type sites, even though it does actually have about 140 homes in this acreage area that's actually 103 hectares, right? It's actually a little bit more than that, but each of the sites, each of the 103 sites are actually two and a half acres. So you can just imagine how many houses and/or, or even units for that matter can be, can be built in this, in this, in this area. Now, one of the biggest issues, or the biggest issue that is stopping this area being unlocked is sewage and stormwater, stormwater. There is no sewage connection, all, the whole site, the whole area itself is septic. And, but there is good news, and that is the fact that there is a sewage treatment plant at Carroll Park. There's one at Waco behind the Women's Prison, and there's actually one at Goodno, all within striking distance of being able to, to install sewage, to, to, install sewage pipes or sewage lines to a treatment plant. Now, I was told when I was, when I first became councillor, one of the developers came and saw me and said that they, they were probably happy to pay for some of that infrastructure because there was just no way you can unlock this land other than doing something along those lines. And I think he said there was about eight and a half million dollars for the connection. It's probably double that, if not more now. But really, when you consider what could be built here in this space, and it really needs to be developed. The locals, the locals are of a mind now for development. They're trying to, a lot of them, of course, have reached an age where they can't look after two and a half acres anymore. And this is part of their retirement plan, so they would like to sell off to the developers and realise that, realise that money for their retirement. It's important that we build as many houses as we can. This is 18 kilometres from Brisbane, it's just off the Logan motorway. Brown's Plains is just down Johnson Road. The accessibility to this, to this acreage site is, is quite phenomenal, really, where you can get, you can get to Brisbane, to Logan, to Ipswich, and then the Gold Coast. And so it just makes sense that we do everything we can by, by submitting to this fund that the federal government has rolled out over, over the last couple of years. It's about a half a billion dollars a year. Now sadly, the successful applicants, unfortunately, in the first round, I didn't see Brisbane actually mentioned. And I'm not sure if we didn't submit for any particular project, or maybe we weren't successful, I just don't know, because they don't tell you that information. And the second round, they haven't actually produced the, the successful applicants at this stage. So I'm just hoping that maybe we do have something in the pipeline here. So I'm just hoping that maybe we do have something in the pipeline here, so to speak, sorry for the pun. But I just think, listen, I'd just love the infrastructure chairman and the planning chairman to come out and have a look at this site, have a look at this property or these properties, and just see, and you can just see the potential that exists out in my ward, the Forest Lake Ward. Now, we have, we have a district park being developed right alongside it, we've had three churches being built within the, within the confines of the acreage area, and more are planned, so, and we even have a 24-hour petrol station and coffee shop that is, and, yeah, petrol station, coffee shop, that's actually being built, or it's, it's been approved for building. So actually, all the services are actually, you know, coming, coming before the housing, which is really a bit weird, because it's usually the other way around. But obviously, developers and people that are establishing churches can see the value in the, in the, in the, of the site. And, and so I just encourage, I just encourage the council to actually undertake the proposal, my proposal, to submit to this particular fund in the next round because I think it is, will be well worthwhile, and it's something that we really need in this city, we just need more homes. Thank you.
Any further debate? Counselor Toomey.
Thank you Mr Deputy Chair, I rise to also speak to this motion, and I would like to put on the record that this side of the chamber does support unlocking more housing. But of course, any future development that we have needs to be assessed, and is subject to specific ecological values of any area that, that is assessed. My understanding that the entirety of the acreage of Ellen Grove is mapped with significant native vegetation and significant urban vegetation. There are vegetation protection orders which encompass 31 acres of property as part of the important ecological corridor that's in, that's in the area. In fact, the planning conditions for Ellen Grove, Counselor Strunk, through you Chair, if you didn't know, is identical to that of Beckett Road at Bridgman Downs. For those who weren't here or who aren't up to speed on that one, Mr Deputy Chair, that site, the leader of the opposition sought to politicise for many years in this place. Like Ellen Grove, Bridgman Downs was zoned emerging communities with significant native and urban vegetation, as well as an ecological corridor mapped across the entirety of the site. I'm curious as to whether the Labor Party's position has changed on residential development in such areas as, as Bridgman Downs. And of course, we did not support Bridgman Downs, for obvious reasons, and in such a way that we took it to court and this council won. But I do find it curious that here, in a Labor-held ward, the opposition seems to have completely backflipped on the protection of ecological areas with high value. I wonder if in the haste to scribe this motion, that the members of Ellen Grove community were not consulted on the new position that Labor has. But putting a, any kind of political backflip aside by the opposition, I have three concerns with regard to this motion, and question whether it is actually competent, and I'll highlight them for the chamber. Mr Deputy Chair, the first one is, is that there is a difference between sewerage and sewerage. One of course is the effluent that travels in the pipe, the other one is in fact the pipe itself. And I do understand that Counselor Strunk's intent was to have sewerage infrastructure and not sewerage infrastructure, but we understand Counselor Strunk's full intent, but that was just a minor spelling mistake, we'll put it down to that. So the motion should actually have sewerage infrastructure written in it. The second concern I have is that Brisbane City Council does not deliver water or sewerage infrastructure. And for those here who don't know, it was the Bligh government, state Labor government, that decided to take water and sewerage assets off local governments in South East Queensland. And they created another entity to deliver those services, which at the time was called Queensland Urban Utilities. This is back in 2010, and it's been the sole role of QUU and now UU to deliver and support that infrastructure over the past 15 years. So the motion then fails on this first hurdle. The first hurdle being that this council cannot do what it is actually asking to, asking it to do. But the third concern is the big one. My third concern, and as Counselor Givney talked about this morning, Google can be a great friend to anybody seeking information very quickly, and that is, is that the programme that Counselor Strunk is asking for us to make a submission in is closed. The first two streams are closed. The only stream remaining is the third stream, which only is open to state governments and federal governments. And Count, Mr Deputy Chair, with that, I seek your ruling on whether this motion is competent.
Is there any evidence?
Oh, my apologies, I have a document here at the table, thank you.
So, point of order, Mr Deputy Speaker.
Point of order, yes.
Yes. Firstly, sorry, Deputy Chair, just with respect to the allegations made by councillor Toomey, the motion itself is not incompetent because its wording is simply saying Brisbane City Council submits a pre-funding proposal. That can be on behalf of UU, which we own by 85%, it's, it's our entity. Two, sewerage is defined as a type of wastewater that comes from home, so sewage infrastructure...
Okay, thank you, I understand your point.
Is sewerage. So these are debatable issues rather than ones that rule out the motion as incompetent.
Thank you, I get your point. Based on the submission and the evidence, that the housing support programme, bracket priority works stream, provides an opportunity for states and territories, bracket states, to fund new projects to expedite, expedite housing development. So I ruled that this motion incompetent, and I declare the meeting closed.